Grabbed all over the place here, sorry.
Welcome to Market City Commission Agenda Meeting for Monday, August 12, 2013. Meeting called to order at 7:00 PM. Will you please join us in a pledge allegiance to the flag?
Aye.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. City Clerk, could we have roll call, please?
Yes, Your Honor. Commissioner Kim Benzey.
Here.
Commissioner Coyne.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
Commissioner Snyder.
Here.
Commissioner Stonehouse. Mayor Pro Tem Neme.
Here.
And Mayor DePietro.
Here. Commissioners, is there a motion to excuse Commissioner Stonehouse, Commissioner Coyne?
I move we excuse Commissioner Stonehouse because he had a conflicting agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a second? Commissioner Neme?
I'll support the motion. Our second motion.
Thank you. Anything further, Commissioner Coyne? Anything?
Nothing.
All in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed, motion passes six to zero. Thank you. Commissioners, is there any note of agenda changes at this time? Seeing none, I'll ask Commissioners, what's your pleasure? Commissioner Ryan?
I move we approve the agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second? Commissioner Kim Benzey?
Second.
Thank you. Anything further, Commissioner Ryan?
Nothing further.
Commissioner Kim Benzey?
Nothing.
All in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed, motion passes six to zero. Thank you. With that, I got a couple announcements here, so I'll get those out of the way. These are for volunteer committees and boards. Aging Services Advisory Committee, one opening. And that's a housing representative. Arts and Culture Advisory Committee, four openings. Harbor Advisory Committee, one opening. Housing Commission, one opening. Local Officers Compensation Commission, two openings. Park and Recreation Advisory Board, one opening. Planning Commission, two openings. Police Fire Pension Board, one opening. Regional Recreation Authority Business Plan Ag-hoc Committee, one alternate opening. Sister City Advisory Committee, four openings. Traffic Parking Advisory Committee, three openings. And with that, we'll move to presentation Utility Financial Solutions LLC and Market Board of Light and Power. Cost of Service Study introduction by Market Board of Light and Power Executive Director Paul Kitty. And presentation by Utility Financial Solutions LLC President Mark Bochamp. You want to go over there?
Nice to hear it.
I can go over there.
Oh, thank you. Mr. Ed Angeli, story about to Mr. Ed.
I've been called worse, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. I'm going to start it off tonight. I'm Ed Angeli. I'm Chairman of the Board of Light and Power. Tonight, we're going to give you a lot of facts, information, figures, and reasons why we're coming in front of you with a rate increase request. I can probably narrow it down into a couple sentences. And that is, in order for us to maintain the reliability and the rates that you experience today as the lowest and the best in Upper Peninsula, we need to increase our rates. It's that simple. We're not looking at tomorrow, we're looking at 10, 15, 20, 30 years from now. What this utility wants to do, what it needs to do, and what it can do. But this is the process we're in front of, and that's why we're here tonight to give you that information. It's a lot of information, but between Paul and Mark, they've got a lot of the answers. And I'm sure if there's one that you question you had that we don't have an answer, we can find it for you. The bottom line, though, is we need your support. We want your support. And I'm here to ask you for your support to get this rate increase going so we can move forward with our power company. With that, I'll give you Paul Kitty, Director of the BLP. It's all yours. Thank you.
Thanks, Ed. Good evening, Commissioners. Mayor Johnny DePietro, City Manager Bill, everybody else. Dave Blue, thanks for putting us on the agenda. Thanks for the cordial invitation. On behalf of the BLP, I'd like to thank Ed Angeli, Karen Kimmar Johnson, JP John Prince, Honored Board of Directors Jerry Garso and John Sanderreger for a lot of the guidance and the work behind the scenes keeping the BLP moving in the positive direction. I have a number of staff members here tonight that I need to introduce you to. I did this once before, but they're the brains and they're the work behind this operation. It doesn't happen with one person. It doesn't happen with one board. We've got Yvonne Whitman here. Rich Johnson, IBW Business Manager. We have a good relationship with them. Working hard to keep the lights on. Rich was instrumental in getting all the instrumentation done at the tourist park hydro. Josh Hendrickson, Tom Carpenter, Matt Zavislak. He's our, he works in our customer service area. Eric Booth. We've got John Reynolds hiding back there. And who else? Oh, Dave Lynch, Mary Adamini, Helen Lafayette, and Noreen Collins. And our former director, a good friend of mine, Kirby Juntala. And he was the man behind a lot of the scenes, getting the trails done and getting the tourist park flowing again. Thanks, Kirby. Having said that, once again, thank you. It's a privilege and an honor to represent the BLP as the Executive Director. But I've said it before, and I'll say it again, it's not my show. It's the BLP's show, it's the board's show, it's the community's show. So... First slide. Let's talk a little bit about the BLP demographics. We got about 16,500 customers plus, if you include a lot of our seasonals, the kind of in and outs and that for camps and everything else. Nine townships we serve. Residential, about 14, five, and commercial, nearly 2,000. Who are we generating history? 1965, the Shires Plant Commission, Unit One. It's 12 and a half megawatt, Unit One. That is not operational anymore. We keep the turbine on turning gear right now. So it is moving. We have a viable turbine, but the boiler is not functional right now. Unit Number Two, 21-megawatt unit, the eastern coal unit, that operates, that has about the eight to 10-hour startup time. Crews operate that. When Unit Three comes off the line for backup power, that's a good, efficient unit. We're studying that as far as the feasibility for continued operation in the future. 1979, we've got a combustion turbine up at Four Plant that operates. It peaks at around 23 megawatts. That has a startup time in about 10 minutes. We'll talk about that more on the next couple pages. The Unit Number Three, our flagship, it's about 30 years old right now, and 44-megawatt unit. And you'll see there in the picture on this, the picture of the plant right there, and a nice coal carrier unloading about 26,000 tons of coal. So those are good jobs. Next one. RP3. Dave Lynch, our Assistant Director of Utility Operations, had added up our American Public Power AP3, our RP3 application over the past several years, and we're vying for the diamond level right now. I'm proud and happy to let you know that the community and the ratepayers are the owners of one of the best-run utilities, not only in the state of Michigan, but the United States. We'll put our metrics up against anybody as far as our costs, our reliability, and availability factors. We do a good job. Our crews out in the field do a good job. Our power production people do a great job, so. Our system-wide availability index is 99.9929%. Average response time, by the time a truck leaves the barn, when they got to call at the plant, they have to call at somebody, the time it leaves the barn on a rural, to your site in the city, is about 16 minutes. Sometimes a little longer, then sometimes they're there, and then the customer comes on and says, geez, I just called you, and they're there. But we have people on standby. Our crews do a great job in that area. Average response time for our rural areas is 22 minutes. Think about that, because we're the largest geographic municipal utility in the state of Michigan. Geographic footprint, not customer base. So we have over 280 line miles. So getting a crew out there in 22 minutes is phenomenal. They're not going at breakneck speed. I know we usually have the police chief here, they're not breaking any speed limits. If they are, let us know. Okay. The picture on the bottom is Travis Neme. We call him Hollywood. He does the school scene there. And Pat Aho, two of our journeyman linemen, they're there when the lights go out, when it's 3:00 in the morning and everybody's tucked in. They're out there disconnecting power on housing fires, car pole accidents, and when our system just goes boom in the night. Let's go to the next slide. Condition assessment. Well, what's a condition assessment? Well, Lutz, Daley, and Brain, they're working, they've got to be smart if you've got a name like that. They're working on condition assessment. And they were around commissioning units One, Two, Three, and our combustion turbine. They've done a lot of substation design. They've been here right from the beginning. They're doing a condition assessment, looking at all of our infrastructure and our units here to see what kind of money, if it's feasible, to put money into these units or, you know, to head off some EPA Boiler MEC regulations on Number Two and some different things. Doing some screening analysis on possible having gas units at a couple different locations. But again, they're doing it from the standpoint that we're in the generation business, we're in the distribution business, and we're in the full-service customer service business. Our customer service operations are open, unlike a lot of utilities. You can walk into our office, I say nine to five, but it's eight to 4:30. Nine to five, and you're greeted with a professional courteous person. And Matt's a part of that team over there, too. So we have our combustion turbine that's used for quick starts, fuel oil. It's located up at Number Four Plant. That can, it's black start capable, can go to full load in 10 minutes. When we say black start capable, back in May of 2010, when the UP experienced UP-wide outage, Marquette had power. 345 line was down for maintenance. The 2138s crossing were hit by lightning strikes, brought down the system. We were able, our power plant, to get the CT going, to feed Presque Isle about 5 megawatts of power to get all their units up and going again. So we're black start capable, and it can get full load in 10 minutes. It's a good unit. Little bit older, if you say 1979, but it doesn't have a lot of hours under its belt, so it's good, yeah. We just invested 2.8 million in getting operating efficiencies up down at the Unit Three at the Shires Plant. And I believe most of you had the opportunity to take a tour of that. Real impressive operation, and the people staffing it do a great job. We have three hydroelectric wheels turning and provide service. Depending on running river, we say, good running river, 3,000 to 4,000 homes it can light up during dry conditions, 1,500, 2,000 homes. But it's renewable energy. It's a good project, and we partnered with this, with the City of Market on this. Cost controls. Well, a lot of people look at this and say, okay, what are you people doing to control costs? You know, we know coal is going up. We know fuel is going up. We know tires for the trucks are going up, hydraulics, all the reclosers and that. Well, what are you doing to control costs? Well, we did a reorganization of our Shires Steam Plant operation schedule, which will realign the crews and provide us some savings in that area. We have not replaced a number of positions through attrition and leveraging of technology. At one time, I believe the headcount was like 110. We're operating at 78. And it's my sense, probably a leveling out point, don't hold my feet to the fire on this, would be probably 75, 76 employees that we'll need, particularly if we're spending, if we're looking at bringing in some new generating assets. We modified our healthcare plan to a PPO, driving our business here to Marquette General Duke Life Point, which is good for the community, is good for us, keeps the dollars from going out to the Mayo Clinic and Marshfield and that. And we understand there are times when families have to do that. But we want to drive and keep our dollars local. That's what we're all about. Locally owned, community controlled. We've increased employee contribution to healthcare. They've done some reengineering down at the plant for boiler scanners. And we use a lot of fuel oil for startups, and the boiler scanners have shaved off about $100,000 a year in fuel oil that we're using to manage the flame in the boiler. They were successful in securing and negotiating a long-term coal contract. We buy that by the boatload, so they project it out there, and it's going to save us over $2 million. That $2 million comes out of the ratepayers' pocketbooks here, so that's going back in. We've reduced the premiums in a variety of areas with safety and risk management, security enhancements. I think you people have been privy to our minutes, you know what we're doing with Michigan Municipal Risk Management Association and others, work comp, doing, working to get our experienced modifiers down, down, and having an aggressive work-hardening program and return-to-work program for our employees. We're reengineering job classifications. When something comes open, the first thing they know I'm going to do is I call a timeout. Timeout, let's take a look at that job. And we'll say, well, that's the way it was posted in the 70s or 80s. I says, well, do we need to take, do we need to post it like that again? So let's, let's take a look at it again. Let's reengineer some of these positions. So we'll work closely with our staff here, and we work closely with the union on doing this because it's incumbent upon us, everybody, that we have good labor relations here, and we, we've got great labor relations, thanks to our, our staff and union representatives. So let's move into investments in a community. What do we do with the BLP? Well, we got the tourist park, recreational, wetlands, six-year fishery program. We've been partnering with NTN Trail Networks and Lake Superior Watershed on our FERC-regulated lands, getting some trails in, doing some neat things like that. Did some work at the Market Regional History Center, partnered with NMU Line School. Dave Lynch, our supervisor there, work is on their board. And when we talk about some of the lights down there, we have some of the line school people come into the Fitz Strip and those areas, they work the poles, we give them hands-on training. We don't pay the freight on the lights, but, you know, we do a lot of the maintenance work out there gratis, and we're doing it in the community. Disc Golf, we just dedicated that, eh, Johnny? That was, that was up, that was another good event there. And scoreboard and land donated for baseball, soccer fields, and BMX tracks. So if somebody says there's not enough to do in this community, they're crazy. They're goofy. Because all you got to do is turn off the TV set and walk out, and there's probably 20 to 30 sports you can participate in. So, and one of the biggest secrets is if you turn off the TV and some of the lights in the house, you're going to save money on energy. But that's part of our energy optimization program. Investing in the future. Well, we've been talking about investing, and we look at this cost-of-service study. You're saying, well, we're going after rates. This is really an investment. Because if we're not investing in our future, then we're divesting ourselves of it, and that's not good. Doing nothing is not an option here. We need to move ahead. And if you take a look at what we've done here on this, this overhead, well, we've already talked about Shires Steam Plant. AMI, 3-point million, 3.2 million dollars, 4.8 for tourist park, and that's renewable energy. 2.5 million on a West Tie Line and substation Number Two upgrade. Now, those are reliability issues. There's a reason why we have the availability index up to 99.9929. Mark will talk a little bit about that later, about our distribution system and surprise, some surprises that he had. Distribution systems upgrades, and Tom Carpenter and his people have been involved with doing a lot of substation relay protection and those kind of things. So we maintain that continuity of service. Because when the blow dryer doesn't work in the morning, or the electric razor, you've got a problem. Why do we need a rate increase? Well, we're looking for a rate increase for the next three years to invest in infrastructure, maintain a lot of the stuff that we, we've just looked at. You've seen that we put $16 million into, that's just the tip of the iceberg into our organization over the years, to continue to reinvest in it, to maintain reliability, and to meet future load growth. The Marquette area is growing. City of Marquette is growing. Some of the townships are growing. That is good for Marquette. We got operations and maintenance, capital and I&amp;E projects, very expensive. We talk about restore some funding. We've got to have some funding for critical storms. When we have a major storm roll in, and it's on all hands on deck, and we're calling in crews from Cloverland or Elgin Delta, and we have reciprocating agreements, those events can cost hundreds of thousands of dollars. You can tally up $200,000 overnight. The money has to come from somewhere, so it comes from a pot. We don't bond for, it comes from that pot. We pull from the pot, it goes down. Need to replenish that. We had a squirrel take out our substation. We call it the million-dollar squirrel jerky, you know. He was pretty well toasted, but a million-dollar substation. Lightning is not our friend. When we had the outage the other day, we had a lightning strike on the line across the river there. Took down the 138 line, caused us to lose our tie line and drop some circuits. The plant people responded marvelously and got the system back on. Prevented the whole system from collapsing, but got the two circuits out. And there were, there were a couple thousand customers affected, but lightning is not our friend either. So... So when we look at this, we're going to talk about a rate increase. This is really our second run at this in 30 years. 8.5% seems like a lot, but on a small bill, it isn't that much. I equate it to a cup of coffee or a good burger or, or not quite even a movie. But, you know, we spend more money on gadgets and gizmos out there than sometimes on, you know, electricity, so. But I don't need to digress on that. We delayed rate increases in 2011 and '12 and '13. And I told Mark this morning that I was going to use him as an example a little bit. Mark told us we needed five years of rates. Well, as a leadership team and as a board, we sat down the last three years, particularly the two years that he said he should have moved rates up. We said, Mark, something's happening in our community. Argonics left. Sarah Lee Moneybret left town. They closed. We lost about 30 businesses, and we had the headcount on those customers. We had people laid off. Those were not good economic times. They said some of the worst economic times since the Depression. Well, it hit Marquette, and Marquette's got a pretty good economy. And we said, this is poor timing for us to come back to ask the, the community and ratepayers for more. Let's move through here, let's see what we can do, let's level off the fat of the land, so to speak, some reserves, and we'll come back. So we invited Mr. Bochamp back in and UFS, and we're here today. So just a little bit of a history. So we, we deferred those years. It put us back a little bit, but we're managing to adjust, okay? Rate approval, this is our third public hearing. Thank you again for the invitation. And we're looking upon Commission moving on this and confirming our rate request and our rate design as proposed by our Board of Directors. We would like to take, have this take effect by October 1st of this year. Our future. Remember before I said doing nothing is not an option? Well, we're going to move ahead. We've been moving ahead. You can see from a lot of our investments. We're community-owned, and every one of you on our system out there is an owner. And you get a shareholder dividend every month when you pay our bill. And you know what I mean by that. Community-controlled, and we're reinvesting for sustainability, and our money stays here in this community, safe for coal contracts, which we've got to send the coal contractor and then send it to out west to pay for the, the mine out there. Well, we're setting the stage for the next 125 years, and we need everybody's cooperation to make that happen. Take a look at Collinsville, 1889. Did they have any idea that they would have a 1,000-footer in that other picture, sitting in front of the Shires Plant, unloading? Probably no idea. Well, that's where we're at. Do we have an idea where we're going to be 125 years from now? I don't have the foggyest, but I can pretty well tell you, I think I know where we're going to be 50 years from now because some of the things that we're doing will still be here, like the tourist park hydro. And we still got a good 25 years or so from Unit Three, and we'll be commissioning some other units down the road as our finances get better. And all I got to say is the future looks very bright for the BLP. I would like to respectfully ask you to hold questions until I've completed the portion. And Mr. Bochamp, at which time, I guess we can open it up then. Johnny, would that be appropriate?
That's the program.
Okay.
Thank you.
During your presentation? Yeah. Mark Bochamp, Mayor DePietro respectfully requested the, the public, if they had a pertinent question during his presentation, if they could pose it at that time, or do you want all questions held?
This is just going to be questions from the Commission because this is in a public hearing.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor DePietro.
That, that way Mark can do his presentation, and then when he's done, then I'll turn it over to my fellow Commissioners.
Sure. Again, on behalf of the BLP, the Directors, all of its employees, and the ratepayers, I want to thank the Commission for this opportunity. I'd like to introduce Mark Bochamp. Mark holds a Bachelor's of Science degree in accounting and an MBA. He's a CPA, and he's got a whole list of titles like a sailor has tattoos. I can hardly pronounce them all. But anyway, he's a nationally-recognized expert specializing in cost of service. He's presented at the APPA already, and is, is, has got a lot of experience here, and has completed numerous studies, and has actively a number of studies going on right now for municipals in Michigan and other states. So without that, I'll introduce Mark. Thanks again.
Thank you, Director Paul Kitty. Welcome, Mark.
I did, I got it. I think, yeah, there we go. All right. Well, thank you very much. I really appreciate the opportunity to be here. The, what I'd like to tell you, what we did for the Market Board of Power and Light was, back in March, we were hired to, to basically complete three tasks. One was a three-year financial projection of how the financials are going to look next year and over the next three years. Then we looked at how much it costs to provide service to each class of customers. And how we do that is we take the total amount of costs that we have, and we allocate it to the different classes based on who's causing those costs. You're going to see the results of that analysis. Once we're complete with that process, we then start the rate design phase, which is what you're going to see here, what we've completed with the rate design. Now, as Paul had mentioned, what we're proposing is an eight-and-a-half percent overall rate adjustment. And I want to show you how we went about the process of designing the rates to achieve that eight-and-a-half percent adjustment. Now, this slide is very interesting to me because, well, interesting from the standpoint, if you look at the, the rates, the average residential customer pays in Marquette, it's about $65 a month, at 700 kilowatt-hours. That's not even the average, actually. It's a little bit more than the average. But if you look at this slide, we're the second lowest in Michigan. And the, if you look at other utilities in Upper Michigan, most of them are down near the bottom as far as cost, like Antinoggin, $145 a month. That's using 700 kilowatt-hours. Elgin Delta, 142. Upper Peninsula Power, 128. Wisconsin Electric, 104, 110, sorry. But we're asking for an eight-and-a-half percent increase on the $65. If our rates had been up around where the other utilities are in Upper Peninsula, we'd probably be asking for about a three-and-a-half, four percent increase. It equates about the same amount of dollars. But you can see this is something to be really proud of, having some of the lowest rates in the state of Michigan, and definitely the lowest rates in Upper Michigan. This, the first slide that I showed you on rates was actually... This, the first slide that I showed you on rates was actually done, part of it was done by us, part of it was done by Marquette Board of Power and Light, and this slide comes from the federal government. And it shows the average cost per kilowatt-hour. This, it has every utility in the nation, but what was pulled out were the Upper Peninsula utilities. And Marquette, you can see, is on the left-hand side. The average cost for residential, which is in the blue line, is a little less than nine cents a kilowatt-hour. Nagone is up over, upwards seventeen, eighteen cents. Upper Peninsula Power, about the same amount. Wisconsin Electric is around sixteen cents. Elgin Delta is over twenty cents a kilowatt-hour on average for residential. That's over twice as much as, as Marquette residents pay. Cloverland is the closest. They're at about eleven cents a kilowatt-hour. And of course, Antinoggin, again, they're up over twenty. So, you can see that we have some of the lowest rates in Upper Peninsula, in the Upper Peninsula. Now, this slide is our cost of service results. Again, what we do is we take the total revenue requirements, which, when we say revenue requirements, that means how much money we need to recover from customers in the rates that we're charging. And we look at who's causing the cost to be incurred. And we compare that cost of service amount to the amount of revenues that we're projected to receive from each class. To give you an example, if you look at the top, it's the city residential class. The cost of service results show that they should be paying about five million, three-hundred-fifty-seven-thousand. They're projected to pay about four point five million. So, to achieve the cost of service results, they would need a nineteen percent increase. Now, it's not what we're gonna give them. But you, this is what the, the cost of service study is showing. Now, some of these classes, like the city general service, all-electric, thirty-six percent increase. Again, we're not proposing that, but everywhere around the country, the all-electric rates historically have been subsidized, and it shows up here in, in Marquette also. And what you're seeing there is not unusual. The seasonal service, forty-four percent increase, and the street lighting and traffic signals, about forty-nine percent. Now, what we do, overall, if you look at the very bottom of this slide, it says that we need about a seventeen point eight percent increase currently in order to meet our financial targets. And our financial targets consist of, one, our legal obligations with respect to debt service, two, the minimum level of cash reserves, and three, the target operating income to fully fund the replacement cost of the infrastructure. Now, the, the real thing that's really pushing or driving, and the thing that we're the most concerned about, is the fact that the cash reserve levels have, have really, by not having those increases, really caused the cash reserves to drop. Our projected cash reserves for next year are about four and a half million dollars. And the following year, without any rate adjustment, we would actually go negative in cash. The minimum, the very minimum level of cash that the, the utility should maintain in reserves in order to pay, be able to pay its bills, should be, it's about eleven point two million dollars. So, what we need to do is to start restoring those cash reserves and moving toward the, the other two financial targets, especially the target operating income. Now, with this cost of service slide, we use that to actually design the rates. If you look at the slide that's up now, this is the proposed rate adjustments for each class of customers. Down at the bottom on the total line, you see that the overall increase is eight and a half percent. Now, looking at the cost of service study, what we did in designing rates, the guidance that we got from the board, was with the eight and a half percent rate adjustment, we didn't want any rate class to be more than two percent above that. So, we had an upper limit of ten and a half. Now, there was, there was one class, we would just want a tad bit above, but, so, we, we tried to design the rates within that parameters. And what we're trying to accomplish is to move toward cost of service, but avoid, avoiding rate shock on customers. Obviously, we didn't wanna give any rate class, for example, a forty-four percent rate adjustment, but we did give them upwards of about ten, ten and a half, to try to move toward cost of service. Now, what I'm gonna do when I go through the subsequent slides, I, I picked out some of the major rate classes, and I wanted to go through and talk about what we did specifically with some of the rate designs. Of course, the first one is the residential. And in the residential class, if you look on the left-hand side, it says the current rates. The current monthly customer charge is five dollars and fifty cents. The cost of service study said it should be eight dollars and twenty-three cents, and we proposed that that charge be increased to seven dollars. Now, one of the things is, we, you know, we've done in excess of five hundred electric cost of service studies for utilities all over the country. And one of the things that I was very surprised about, and actually was the same thing that, that showed up in two thousand and nine when we did the study, is that monthly customer charge of eight twenty-three. Most municipally-owned public power systems in the country has a monthly customer charge from a cost of service standpoint between twelve and sixteen dollars. And that's because they have a fairly densely-packed service territory. In other words, they serve fifty, sixty homes per mile a line compared to somebody like a, a electric co-op that serves only a couple homes per mile a line. The monthly customer charge tends to be higher. Now, Marquette is, is kind of in between the two. They have, they don't have a very densely condensed service territory. Of course, they do within the city limits, but they serve so much territory outside that they're more structured like a co-op. So, what really surprised me is that customer charge came out as low as it did. And it's, the reasons for that is mainly because they've continuously reinvested in the system, and they maintain the reliability. At the same time, they've controlled operation and maintenance costs. When we looked at the detail of the study, it, it shows that they really did a very good job of controlling cost. I looked at the, the age of the infrastructure, the distribution infrastructure. The average age for a public power system in the United States is about forty-nine percent depreciated, means it's halfway through its life. Here, the, the, the age of the infrastructure, the distribution infrastructure, is forty-three percent depreciated, which means it's a relatively new infrastructure. So, they've continuously reinvested to maintain reliability. But what we're trying to do is to increase that monthly customer charge, excuse me. And what that does is, it promotes fairness among the ratepayers, especially between customers that are seasonal. By having a monthly customer charge set properly, it actually helps keep the rates lower for the year-round ratepayers, because seasonal customers who are causing a lot of costs to be incurred, because they're, they're not on our system when we have a lot of excess capacity in the winter, but they are on our system in the summer, and they're, they're causing a lot of the peak demands to occur. And by having a customer charge set properly, we're, we're sending, we're getting a better cost recovery from the seasonal customers, and it's fair, we're actually helping to keep the charges lower for the year-round ratepayers. Now, the other changes that we made, if you look at the current rates, you have what's called a declining block rate structure, which means the more you use, the less the costs are. They go down as you use more. The, currently, it's seven point four four cents for the first thousand. The excess is seven cents above that. A declining block rate structure is something that's, very few utilities have that now, mainly because they don't promote energy conservation, for one. Two, they're not cost-based rate structures, 'cause the cost of service study says that they all should be priced at the same amount. So, what we're proposing is the elimination of that declining block and just having one flat energy rate, which, for the average residential customer, that's probably going to help them, because the average usage in Marquette, the average residential customer uses about five hundred kilowatt-hours a month. So, it's only if you exceed a thousand that we're gonna bring that block up, and they're the ones that are gonna be affected a little bit more. Now, if you look at the energy rate of seven point four four cents, and you go all the way down to the bottom, it says fuel adjustment. One point eight six two cents, that's the fuel adjustment charge. It's a variable portion of the rate. What we're proposing to do is to take that variable portion, the fuel, and put that back into the rate design, and basically true-up or zero-out the fuel adjustment charge. So, if you, if you follow the fuel adjustment over to the middle column, you'll see that that projected fuel adjustment, of course, that's variable, would go from one point eight six two down to virtually zero, point zero 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 seven. And what we're doing is we're putting that back into the rate. So, the current rate for that first block is about nine point three cents a kilowatt-hour. We're proposing that to be increased to nine point seven six. Again, that's just a slight rate adjustment. And the impact, the dollar impacts on customers, the average customer uses about five hundred kilowatt-hours, as I said. If you go to the second column from the right, the, the average dollar impact is about four dollars and fourteen cents a month. And that's what they'll actually see as an increase on their bills. Of course, it would vary based on their actual usage. At three hundred kilowatt-hours, they'd see a little over a three, a three-dollar increase. At seven hundred kilowatt-hours, about five dollars and twenty cents. That's inside the city. Now, outside the city, we actually, again, we're trying to move closer to cost of service. Now, outside the city, percentage-wise, they're not gonna get as big of an increase. It's slightly less than the inside-city ratepayers, but from a dollar impact, because they're currently paying slightly higher rates, their monthly customer charge is a little higher, and their energy rate is a tad bit higher. So, in the end, their, their, their impacts are gonna be about the same as inside-city ratepayers. So, at five hundred kilowatt-hours, it was four dollars and fourteen cent increase inside the city. The outside-city ratepayers would see a four dollars and twenty-four cent increase. Now, the general service rate, this is gonna be like your small commercial accounts. And what we did here is the current monthly customer charge is thirteen dollars and eighty cents. The cost of service study shows it should be nineteen dollars and eighteen cents. So, we propose, again, a step toward, in that direction, so the rate would go to sixteen dollars a month. And then the energy rates, if you bring in the fuel adjustment charge, they're currently being charged about ten point six cents. We're proposing a slight increase to eleven point three one cents. And the impacts in the general service, small commercial accounts, the average usage is about fourteen hundred, fourteen ninety, I guess. They're gonna see about a twelve, thirteen-dollar increase in their bills, 'cause they use more energy. The range of dollar impacts for this class is anywhere from ten dollars to sixteen dollars a month. Percentage impacts is gonna be a low of seven point three percent increase to a high about seven point seven. So, again, it's a modest rate adjustment. The power service, this is a demand meter to count, and you're gonna see me go through a couple of different rate designs on these. But by demand meter to count, they have a meter that records not just the kilowatt-hour consumption, but also the peak demand that the customer creates on the system, which is a better, more fair, more accurate way of charging. And if you look at about halfway down the current rates, the current demand charge is nine dollars and twenty-five cents. The cost of service study showed that that number should be upwards, actually around twenty-one dollars. So, we're moving in that direction. But we, we propose that be increased to about eleven dollars a month. Now, the energy rate, which is currently set, if you roll in the PCA, the fuel cost adjustment, they're currently charged seven point two one cents kilowatt-hour in total. We're proposing that that go to about seven point five three. Now, for this class, the impacts are dependent on how efficiently they use the system. So, for a typical customer at a forty percent load factor, and forty percent load factor, what that means is, if you took their peak demand, how much their average demand is in a month, compared it to their peak demand, that means that their average demand is forty percent of their peak demand. Okay? It's their efficiency factor, in a sense. And forty percent load factor, because, and they, they're, these are larger customers. They'd see about a sixteen hundred dollar increase in the monthly bill. That equates to about nine point five percent. At an eighty percent load factor, this is where they're using, they're, it's like a twenty-four-hour-day operation, they would see about a seven point eight percent increase. Now, the large power service, again, the demand charge, which is currently set at seven dollars and eighty cents, we're proposing that to be increased to nine dollars and twenty-five cents. The energy rate with the fuel adjustment charge is currently seven point oh six cents. We're proposing a slight increase to seven point four three. And that equates to a percentage impact on their bills of anywhere from eight percent to nine point five. The last rate design that I wanted to discuss is the large power rate design. This is for customers above five thousand KW demands. I think you have six of these customers, and the current demand charge is seven dollars and sixty-five cents. We're proposing that to be increased slightly to eight dollars and thirty cents. And the energy charge, the all-energy charge is currently six point nine six cents. We're proposing that to go to seven point five one. So, the average customer is gonna see anywhere from about an eight point eight, well, it's pretty flat, about an eight point eight percent increase in their charges. And what I did here is I kinda pulled out most of your major rate classes that I wanted to get into some deal, some detail in. Now, you know, one of the things that we go through this process, what we really try to do, we have a certain philosophy, and that is that we try our best to keep the rate adjustments below five percent, if at all possible. And part of the reason for that is, when you have five percent rate adjustments, customers tend to view them as inflationary-type rate adjustments, and you get, you get very little backlash, in a sense, from having the rate adjustments. In this, then increases between five and ten percent, they still tend to be acceptable based on our experience, but we tend to get some complaints or phone calls from larger users. Well, we always try to avoid our ten percent rate adjustments. Now, with that said, you can see that I, I actually am recommending an eight and a half percent increase, rather than trying to keep it below the five percent. And the reason for that is the cash reserve levels are, are down to a critical point. And without being able to replenish that, those cash reserves, it, it's gonna cause issues with, we're, we're not gonna be able to pay our bills, I mean, in a sense. What, you know, we have coal that we need to purchase, you know, that's three and a half million dollars out of four and a half million dollar projection. That leaves very little for operating reserves. And so, we, we felt like we had no choice but to stay with the eight and a half percent rate adjustments, even though we tried very hard to keep it lower. So, with that, I would like to turn it over to any questions anybody may have.
Thank you very much, Mark. And I'm sure Paul will be more than happy to join you up there, as I'm sure my fellow commissioners have some questions at this time. Commissioner Ryan?
Well, thank you, Mayor. First of all, we only received the data you provided late this afternoon, and so we, I haven't had a lot of chance to look through it. I'm still trying to get a good understanding of the basic reason for the increase. Now, you just hit on one, which is cash reserves are getting very low. Are there some other key reasons for this increase? I mean, is, is this all going to be used for rebuilding reserve levels, or, are, are there funds in here for future projects, future activities, changes in the operation? I, I think, you know, people look for simple answers, you know, and there's a mountain of material here, but the average, the average person on the streets says, "Why? What, what is this all about?"
Well, there's three main financial factors, financial matrices that we look at. And we know that if we can achieve these three, all the other financial matrices will fall in line. Those three are, one, achieving your debt service coverage requirements, which, that's not an issue here, not currently. The other one is the target operating income. And when you first hear a target operating income, you think, "Okay, that's money that's... And when you first hear a target operating income, you think, okay, that's money that's, um, we're a non-for-profit, why should, why do we have a positive bottom line? But we're not talking really about a bottom line to make money. We're talking about a bottom line amount that covers two things. One is interest expense in our debt. And the other one is the inflationary increase in assets replacement costs. Because what we're trying to do by achieving that target is for the current rate pairs to pay for the assets that they're consuming. Because even if we don't have a direct capital expenditure, if an asset is out in service, that asset is wearing down. And so there's something in, we have depreciation expense that we want to recover because that's the, the estimated cost of the asset that's being worn down each year. Okay, so that, that is the ultimate target. But that's really not what's driving this increase, neither one of those two. The number one thing, really the only thing that, that I'm standing here before you saying we need to do the eight and a half percent is cash. And even though I try to achieve funding depreciation expense, our cash reserves are at a critically low level. So we're still low on our target operating income. But normally, if the cash reserve levels are higher, I'm able to buffer those adjustments and stay below the five percent. But the problem is I can't because we don't have enough cash reserves. And so we need that influx of cash in a sense to be able to, so we, we can pay our bills and do the capital improvements and maintain a reliable system. So that's kind of what is driving this is cash. I know that's kind of a simple answer. Uh, to some, to some degree, a complex question, but, but that boils down to cash. It's very seldom I stand here and never say it's, it comes to, to the cash.
Is this cash on an annual basis or, or because there are high cash needs at some particular times of the year or?
Some of it's high cash needs. The cash reserve levels, I mentioned when I started, that the minimum level of cash that we should maintain in the electric department, minimum, is about eleven point two million. And how that number is derived, we look at a number of different factors. One of them is the working capital difference between when you pay a bill and you get your money from the customers. There's about a forty-five day lag period, so we have to maintain that cash reserves. You have, um, your debt service payments, so you need to make sure that you have that maximum debt service payment. You mentioned the coal pile. That's a three and a half million dollar cash outflow all at once. You have your capital improvement program. We have to make sure that there's enough cash and reserves to fund the capital improvement program at the start of the construction season. So we can complete it. You know, we have the cash to complete it during that period of time. And the last factor that we look at as far as risk, there's a number of risk factors we look at. But one of the major ones is your exposure to a catastrophic event. Uh, if you have an ice storm or a windstorm come through, now, that can lead to some very serious potential damage and expenditures. But we don't want necessarily have enough cash reserves to fund an entire catastrophic event. We just want to make sure we have enough to start the repair and replacement process until financing can be arranged. And I don't know if anybody's ever, ever received like FEMA funding. A lot of times when there's that type of a, a, an event that occurs, it's covered by the federal government. But the problem with FEMA is they typically only cover about sixty-five to seventy-five percent of the cost. And it can take two to three years to get the money. So you still have to have that cash and reserves. So these are the things that we look at. And part of the reason we want that is it's very important to the bond rating agencies. And one of the things we're looking down the road on is the potential of issuing debt to possibly add additional generation. And when we do, that's a very significant expenditure. And we have to make sure that we can get the best possible bond ratings to keep the interest expenses as low as we can, to keep our rates as low as we can. So these are all the factors and things that we look at.
I'll just ask one final, and it's kind of an oversimplified way of looking at it, I guess. But you're not saying that we're, we're selling power for less than it costs us to deliver it. But you are saying if we're going to take care of needs like depreciation and planning for the future, we, we have to build our cash reserves. And I don't want to put words in your mouth, I'm just asking a question.
It's a little bit different than that. It's, it's more related to, um, you know, you have capital expenditures for normal capital improvements and just to maintain the system. And without the rate adjustments, I mean, we're going to fall seriously, we're already seriously short on cash. And we're just going to continue to go down. We have to stop the, the, the cash going down. We have to levelize it and start bringing it back up. Because right now, we're drawing down on our reserves. And, and that was done intentionally. You know, back, uh, a few years ago, our cash reserve levels are up in the twelve, thirteen million dollar range. And we felt that we had adequate reserves to forego those two rate adjustments. And of course, once that occurred, the cash reserves started going into a negative situation. So in response to the, that, your question, are we selling it for less than cost right now? Yes, we are. It depends on what cost you look at, but all in cost, we are selling it for less. Seventeen point six percent less. So even with this rate adjustment, we're still selling it for less. It, it won't be until we get to the third year before we get to the point where we're at, or we're actually selling it for the appropriate amount that we should.
Thank you, Commissioner Cohen.
Um, thank you. Uh, just to follow up on Commissioner Ryan's question about cash. A, a few years ago, when the dam broke, uh, we had an issue of that you did not have enough cash to fix it. I mean, that's just reality, you didn't. And I think that shows another example where the, the fact of having capital is very important. And we just had a community example of that with, uh, Marquette General Hospital. They couldn't buy new beds and new rugs or new anything because they didn't have any capital. They didn't have any cash. So in order to get out of that, they had to have an infusion of capital. And in reality, they then sold because they couldn't do what they had to do to survive. So the rate increase, to me, is really an infusion of, of money, of capital to allow you to run this operation correctly. I, I, I want to ask you this, and I, I wasn't clear with what Mr. Angelie said. When do you, assuming this is, uh, approved and, uh, goes into effect, when do you consider the rate increases for everyone to go into effect?
I believe it was October first.
Okay, I, I want to just raise an issue for the commission and for you to think about. You said you have six major users, that this is going to be a very substantial increase in their electric bills. You take a person on a fixed income, a senior citizen. Uh, it doesn't sound like very much, uh, four dollars, uh, very much. But if you're living on fifteen hundred dollars a month, that's a lot. And I think the, the question of timing is important, both for an individual who budgets, if they know in a year they have to have more, they have to budget so they can pay four dollars a month more. Or X company that, that's got a bill of, what, what's the highest bill that an electric bill that somebody has?
Someone resident?
No, no, a big company.
Oh, it's got to be fifty thousand a month.
Fifty thousand a month. Well, you'd think that, you know, if, if we just said, okay, and you said, in October, by the way, your bill is going to go up ten percent of fifty thousand a month. That, they're not budgeted for that. That's, that's a reality that the commission has to represent in terms of the city, in terms of giving people time to budget for this increase if it is, um, implemented. I think that's a thing you should think about. But, um, I, I want to commend you both for an, an explanation of a topic that is just mind numbing, but it was very simple, very understandable. And I would hope tonight that we do not vote on this. Uh, I would vote against a motion to approve it tonight because I think we need to allow the citizens to hear this, see it. It's on the, on our website. Uh, and then have a meeting, at the next meeting, have the opportunity for public to, uh, talk about it and then have us, uh, vote on it. But I, I don't, I hope we wouldn't do that tonight. I don't think that's fair to the public, be that a person of limited income or a company with huge bills. So I really appreciate, uh, your comments tonight. Thank you, very clear.
Could, could I just, uh, respond a little bit to that?
Yeah, sure.
The, um, a couple of things is, one of the reasons we develop a rate track is, is for the reasons that you state. So that people have an idea or know for budget purposes, um, what's going to happen in the future. You know, unfortunately, and this is consistently happens, um, is that first year you do it, you know, we, we need to adjust the rate. So there isn't, you know, after that, they have a, a lot of time in a sense to plan for it. So that, that is, you, you know what I mean?
No.
Oh, the first year, you're right, they only have two months. But the second and third years, they're going to know that there's additional adjustments in coming in place. So that, then that they, they will be aware of. But one of the things that we do do intentionally is we do target October as the rate adjustment, time to do the rate adjustments. And the reason we do that is you, you're coming off the higher usage summer period. Um, October is what's called a shoulder month where the usage is low. And so that, that tends to be a very good time to place a, a rate adjustment in place. Because typically, even with the rate adjustment, their bills are still less than they were the previous month. Uh, because they use more typically in, in August or September than they would in October. Uh, so that tends to be a very good time to do rate adjustments. Uh, that's done intentionally, but, um, you, you're right from the standpoint. It's, it's good to have as much notice for budgeting purposes.
Thank you. City manager, city attorney, this is just a presentation. This is not going to be asked as a vote for tonight, correct?
Right, it's not on the business part of the agenda, so there wouldn't be a, it wouldn't be appropriate to take a vote on this tonight.
Exactly, and that's why I just want to make it clear that we're just asking questions and we will have a public hearing, uh, scheduled for this. So, uh, I know Commissioner, um, Neme has some questions he would like to ask at this time.
Thank you, Your Honor. Well, I've got one question at, at the start and perhaps I'll defer some other questions to later. But we're talking about a three, three different rate increases here, is that correct? And we just now have information on the first year of the increase. You haven't determined the, the next two years of increase at this point.
The, the detail of the rate designs are not in place, but they're going to be very similar in adjustments to what you see.
So we're, you're saying eight and a half percent this year, another eight and a half percent next year and eight percent?
Correct.
Oh, okay. I can do the math, but it would have been nice if you had done the math so that we could see what the rates will be for, you know, residential customer in year one, residential customer in year two and, and year three. I'm fully capable of doing that, but it would be certainly easier for...
I see what you mean, yes.
Okay, I guess my, my concern was that if we didn't have that information, when we do come to confirm this, this rate or, or not confirm it, I, I wouldn't want to confirm for the, the second and third year. But I guess if we had the information, then that's a moot question. We could easily confirm for the, the second, third year, once we know what that, that information is.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Schneider?
I guess we'll just go right down the line. You know, I want to thank you guys first for being able to give us a pretty clear picture of something that I think is actually really quite complex. And I understand that it does come down to money. Having operated businesses, if you don't have that money in the bank, especially when something comes up, things go bad really, really quickly. And I understand those concerns. I think the BLP has done a tremendous job for the, for the area residents, um, both in rates and service, and I really appreciate that. That said, as, as an elected rep of, of the community, I've got some concerns as far as the rate increase, that definitely would affect, affect my vote and make me concerned for voting for it, which would be, um, one, the three rate increases. If we're voting on it and there's going to be three rate increases, that's, that's fairly significant. And I feel that, personally, I feel that each rate increase should be dealt with annually to kind of see how things are going. I understand the, the long-term need for it. But I would hope that it encourages a dialogue both between the entities of the city of Marquette, us being, uh, representatives of the residents here as well as the BLP, to figure out where we're going and see how it's going and where it is at the following year, rather than approving something that we're not totally sure what the rates will, rate increase suggestion will be two years or three years down the line. My other question, and this is definitely, uh, more directed at Mr. Kitty, is does the BLP have a long-term strategic plan or a master plan in the way that the city does?
We are in the process of finalizing that now. Uh, it's based on our model of customer value and our metrics are reliability and affordability, and that's driving it. We're in the process of doing that. We'll have that wrapped up, I would suspect, in the next sixty days or so.
Okay, but it's not...
Moving in that direction. But we've been in the process. And we've done, uh, strategic planning in the past, you're looking and, and metrics and that. We're not at where we're at today because we've guessed a lot of stuff, you know, we've had a lot of metrics. And, uh, so we've had some strategic planning. But with, with respect to something formal, uh, that's coming out, uh, the next, I'd say, sixty-nine, ninety days. We'll have a hard copy of that.
Okay, um, and the reason I ask is, my concern comes from, you know, the city operates on a master plan. And that, it does get into a lot of metrics, but it also gets into a lot of the, I'll just say touchy feely things of how our community feels about where we should be going. And even though we're two separate entities, it is, the BLP is a city entity. And in many ways, I think that some of the touchy feely stuff that I'm referring to also relates to the BLP and where we're going. You know, we've had a hundred and twenty-five years of, of energy production. I believe the BLP was started when the last charter was, um, was drafted. It was a separate entity. And I'm, I would like to see some sort of corroboration between the city, um, master plan and the BLP master plan so that some of the residents' concerns are, are brought in there. You know, I think in the next fifty to hundred years, if we're looking that far forward, which I hope we would be for this, coal prices may shoot up drastically, the availability of coal may not be there. So I'm very concerned in the long term, what we're doing for resiliency. You know, how are we going to be dealing with, um, you know, if residences and businesses wanted to start generating their own energy and how that relates to BLP? You know, if we end up with a data center, how are we going to be able to produce enough energy within our own community? You know, and I don't want to put that all on you guys to try and solve now, but it's definitely...
As I mentioned before, you know, uh, touched upon the, uh, condition assessment. And that's part of the screening analysis that we're in the process of doing to add additional, uh, capacity here for loads such as a data center. And, uh, we've just completed our, uh, capacity study. So we're lining up some studies with, uh, well-known national level firms and that, and that material is available, so. But, uh, good questions, very good questions.
And, yeah, I think for me, part of it's the capacity and part of it's the resiliency. You know, for a hundred and twenty-five years, I definitely want to make sure that we're resilient, not just by the power plant, but that our residents will always have power, whether they're producing it in cooperation, um, in their own homes, in their own businesses, and working with the BLP. I don't know what those things are. But, um, you know, I think that, that you guys would have a much better idea of what those possibilities are. I think some of our residents would as well. But in, in approving a rate increase, something that I would like to see, is definitely an explanation of what is being looked at. Like, I understand just for business purposes, it's needed for the, for the extra cash reserves. But, um, to feel comfortable approving it, I'd want to be able to see that the BLP is looking at that long-term holistic picture. But again, all of those, those critiques are couched in. I think the BLP has done a really good job and I understand the business of what you're dealing with and, and what you're proposing. I just wanted to let you know those.
We're a not-for-profit entity and, uh, we, but we run it like a business. I mean, and, uh, we, we know where you're coming from. We, we know there's a lot of questions out there and they've talked about a different options for energy and that. And part of what we're doing with, uh, Let's Daily Brain is, uh, they're going out there and they're looking at a variety of different things. And it'll be screening out a lot of different, uh, avenues and what we're going to do for power production down the road. And we know, uh, coal is on, kind of on a slippery slope right now with some of the power plants, although our, uh, number three unit, uh, was it rated at one time as the number seventh cleanest stack in the United States? It's still up there for, uh, emissions. Uh, number two, uh, right now, uh, there are some decisions coming up with that in the next couple of years. So we are looking at the possibilities of dual field, gas, oil type things, uh, as, and base load and then for what we need for spinning reserves here. But, uh, good questions from, uh, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, that's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Kevanzy. Thank you, Commissioner Kambenzi.
Thank you. I'd just like to thank you for being here and certainly for your, um, detailed presentation. On the charter commission, one of the main questions I wanted to know was what was the long-term plan and also what was the status of the assets looking out 30, 40, 50 years? Um, this is a great start for explaining it. Um, my concern certainly stems for not only the residential users, but these lar- large power users, um, I think it was Commissioner Coyne said, you know, they've set their budgets for a year. Some of these large rate users, this equates to a difference of employees, not just one, but maybe several. And I know some of the large users out there, they don't have the cash reserves they need to go forward to next year. And so what I'm getting at here is I think that the communication piece is missing, this is coming at us and it's putting, at least from my viewpoint, the commission in a hard position to go to the community and, and sell this. And, um, you know, we're not going to make a decision tonight, but I'm, I'm wondering if my fellow commissioners wouldn't be in favor of actually having a work session with the BLP just to go over some of this more, to invite the community, to invite some of these large users, residents, to come in and have a dialogue about this. It, you know, we all know that you can't let assets, facilities go too long, same with our roads and infrastructure before they fail. So all of us understand that. I'm concerned that we need to have more of a community dialogue so that there's an educational process, um, you know, but also that, is this the only way? Because the market area public schools went out for a very large millage, um, just over a year ago, and the community sent a pretty clear message back that said, find another way. And my fear is that three years of an eight percent or around an eight percent increase, the community might send us back a similar message saying, we just can't do this. So is there another way? I think, um, the information you have is solid, I think it's, it's getting us to where we need to be, but I would like to actually see a work session where we can sit down and discuss this more and invite the community and to have that discussion with us. So I guess those are my thoughts.
Commissioner Kambenzi, you have the floor. Did you want to make the motion to do a work session? Commissioner Coyne?
I, finish.
Commissioner Kambenzi?
I'm done for now.
Commissioner Coyne?
Um, thank you. I, this is more a comment or a statement, um, following up Commissioner Kambenzi's, is there another way? We, I mean, the reality is, we have an elected board by the citizens who have chosen to document exactly how this needs to be done and what needs to be done. And they've had public hearings and, and nobody said anything. Uh, this was not just this board arbitrarily throwing darts at a dartboard and saying four percent, eight percent, whatever. I mean, it's a very specific, well-thought-out plan. And I, I don't see that there is another way, personally. I mean, this is, this is the numbers. I, I, I think, to me, the major issue is when to implement it. And, uh, and we're going to hear a lot of comments and so forth, but I don't think we're going to hear another way to do it. This is, I mean, this is reality, that they're, these are responsible people, they've done a good job, uh, and you can't just say, we don't want any rate increase, I mean, and we don't want, we want a four percent as opposed to an eight percent. This is what we heard, and it's, it's a very objective example of why it needs to be done. So, um, I think we really do need public input. I don't know whether we need a public hearing per se, as opposed, I mean, a, a work session. After the work session, we may feel we need a work session. After the public hearing, we may need a work session if we're not convinced that this is okay. But I, I think we ought to have the public hearing first. For one thing, people come to this more willingly than work sessions, as we found out. So I, I think that would be a reasonable thing, but I, I need to be proven why this isn't necessary. Right now, I think it's necessary. And to me, I'm taking the approach, prove me it's not necessary, but also give me some more time as a citizen to, or a big company to implement it. Two months is not reasonable. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Ryan?
I have a question probably for our attorney. Um, our, our involvement here is very limited. As Commissioner Coyne points out, there is a board elected to operate the Board of Light and Power. Our only responsibility is to approve rate increases, is that correct?
That's correct. The, the Board of Light and Power fixes all rates for the utility service and, uh, the, the sole responsibility of this commission is to confirm or not confirm those rates. This is not a negotiation session. They've already taken action. As Commissioner Coyne said, they've vetted it, probably had public hearings and did all the other things. So our only posi- our only job at this point is to confirm or not confirm these rates.
And I guess, kind of a technical point within that, I don't know if, if their proposal is a three-year rate increase, and if so, if that's all that's on the table. I mean, does this commission have the option of saying, well, we'll give you one year? I'm not saying I want to do that, but I, I think we should know going in what the options are.
Well, well, first of all, the way it works is the Board of Light and Power sends to the city commission the rate increases or increase or whatever it is that they have adopted by their board. Tonight, we've seen a presentation, I haven't heard anyone say that they've actually fixed rates or adopted rates yet, maybe they have, but when those rates are adopted and fixed by the board, then they should come here for confirmation. As simple as that. And I don't know that we've seen tonight, uh, if we know what really has happened at that, at, at the BLP level yet.
Okay, and, and can they set, set rates for three years? And if they come in with a three-year rate, is that, the commission has the option of either approving it or not approving it?
Well, we haven't seen that before. The, the charter simply says that they have the power and authority to fix all rates, and whether that's a one-year rate increase or a two-year or a three-year, whether it's, it's staggered like that, that's really their, their decision. Um, and I guess it depends on how it's presented to us. I haven't seen it yet, so I, I really can't-
But you do agree these are issues that have to be kind of sorted out?
Well, we need to see what they bring to this commission for approval. If they bring it as a package for approval, then I would assume that that's what they want.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Schneider?
You know, I definitely want to agree with Commissioner Coyne on this, that I think the, the public hearing that, that's coming up is a good opportunity to, to listen to the public and to look at the proposal and, and see if it's, you know, something worth moving forward or not. You know, I've already expressed my concern about, uh, accepting three years of rate approvals, because essentially that's saying, you know, we'll take on three rate approvals at once. Um, I am concerned about the timing. Uh, but as far as the public process is concerned, you know, we, we see at our work sessions that the public that shows up might be a media person, period. Um, even at our city commissions, well, this meeting's a little bit different, but we rarely get much of a crowd. And something tells me that the BLP gets significantly less of a crowd, um, than, than we do. And so I think, even though the BLP as an entity did all of the right things, um, for public comment, this is where everything is going to get heard, because we're, we're more, um, we're a little bit more in the public eye. And even then, I think sometimes we're still opaque, because people don't necessarily like following government. Um, but when this hits the paper, the city commission's looking at doing it, it tends to bring in a lot more. So, I mean, you guys know my concerns and the public that's here and the public that's seeing us on, on television. I'm really hoping you take the opportunity to reach out to the members of the Board of Light and Power. I'm sure that all of your contact information is available online. I'm hoping that, um, you reach out to the city commissioners and that you come to that meeting and express your, your opinions to us, so that we have an idea of, of what you're feeling when it comes up in, in public hearing.
Thank you. Commissioner Coyne?
I think, um, if we do have a public hearing at the first last meeting in August, uh, the, I would hope that the Board of Light and Power will have a proposal, because we don't have that right now specifically, I don't think. So I think that would be, the, the public hearing ought to be about the proposed rate increase, and it ought to be a specific proposal, and then we can deal with it.
Commissioner Ryan?
And, and again, probably to follow up with the attorney on that same point, you know, we have this system now where we can't act on things on the same night we discuss them. If, if, um, just so the Board of Light and Power is familiar with what we're going to have to do, if, if they come to us with a proposed rate increase, can we even act on it when it's presented to us?
This is not a, this won't be like an ordinance, it can be-
Okay.
If it's presented to the commission on the next meeting in August, it could be confirmed at that meeting.
Commissioner Neamy?
Thank you, Your Honor. I guess I'd like to ask Mr. Kitty, is the, this rate has been approved by the board or has been approved by the board? Is this what you're-
This rate, the first year has been approved, we have not designed the second and third year. And, uh, is it my sense that the commission, I would like to see years one, two, and three, because I believe Mr. Bocham can make that happen?
I certainly would, or I, I wouldn't be willing to approve two and three until I-
Not knowing what they look like.
Right. I'm not going to give anyone a blank check. And I, you know, the way I view it is, I, uh, I think that, obviously, the, the Board of Light and Power needs the cash for, for unforeseen circumstances. And if, if these rates generate more cash than you need or, or the, the, uh, unforeseen circumstance of the future don't derive, you know, detract from that cash, then you'll have that cash to meet your future needs, once you get your, your capacity study done. I'm sure you're going to be coming to us or, or looking at what the alternatives are and what the resources to meet those alternatives are going to be. And, and certainly that will, will probably, you know, require rate increases in the future. So, you know, the Board of Light and Power doesn't, doesn't waste our money, they, they use it, you know, judiciously, so I'm, uh-
One of the things that we can try to make sure that we get done in the next couple of weeks is, is the years two and three rate design.
Yeah, that would be good. That's all I have.
Commissioner Coyne?
Well, I'm sitting here listening, um, and you're, uh, I think the likelihood of this passing, uh, for us, if you present us with a one-year rate increase, is very likely. I think if you go 25 percent, you know, over three years, that's, you're going to get some tough bargaining. So you, as a board, I think, might think, well, is it best to go for all three years? Or is it best to pursue one year and we'll see how it goes? Uh, that's your decision. But I think, uh, based on what I'm hearing, that, that has a less likelihood of being approved. And then that's, then that's a mess, frankly, just a mess. You're in a mess and you're in deeper financial difficulties if, if nothing happens. And so that's just a thought.
Thank you.
There's no, no doubt about it, we can come up with a second and third year. But again, as our presentation outlined and highlighted, and I think everybody's aware of it, we spent down a lot of cash, and we know money doesn't grow on trees, and if it did behind our warehouse, the tree's pretty picked dry. And, uh, a lot of this, and my theme was, this is an investment, and it equates to, our common denominator here is, all the cash that we put into the system creates better reliability. And you've seen our reliability here, you know. So, uh, we're going to keep driving that point and, but we do appreciate all your comments. We know that you represent a lot of the, uh, the residents, voters of the city, and we'll look at years two and three, and, uh, thank you.
Thank you. Any other commissioner at this time? Uh, seeing no further questions, uh, I want to thank both of yous for coming up here and, uh, presenting us all your homework that you've done, and I know you've still got more to do, so anyways, thank you very much, and we'll see you in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you, I really appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
I want to thank the mayor and, uh, city manager, and again, all the commissioners and the public for this opportunity, and, uh, you'll be hearing from us, you'll see more of us down the road. Thanks again.
Thank you very much. Yeah. Just waiting for a city clerk. And as we move to item number four, YMCA, adendum to lease agreement, city clerk?
Oh.
Oh, just a minute, uh, had a senior moment. Don't worry, you people will get them when you get older. Okay, I want to welcome a couple of people, Stan Bigum from Aging Services Advisory Committee, and Paul Shalago, um, with the Planning Commission. Could you meet me over there and I'll give you a couple of city pins? Thank you, fellow commissioners, for that heads up. Stan?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much for volunteering, coming aboard.
Serve at your pleasure, sir.
You know, and we know how committed you are and have been with the committee, with the community for the last 25 years, so anyways, we appreciate it very much. And I want to present the city pin for you for coming on board, and I want to turn this over to you first. I know you've got some things you wish to say to my fellow commissioners, people out there in TV land and the city-
Well, I know, Mayor, I serve at your pleasure, and the commissioners, you know what, how I feel about the seniors of this community, and I'll do my best to, uh, make sure I fulfill that, that role.
Well, we know that we have all the trust in you and Paul for stepping up to this committee. We thank you very much, so-
Thank you.
Just stand over here and let Paul come up.
You're okay, Paul?
And Paul is on the, uh, Planning Commission, so we thank you very much.
Thank you, Jenny.
And we know there's a lot of work on the Planning Commission. With that, I want to, uh, give you the city pin.
Thank you.
And I wanted you to say a few things, uh, what's on your mind to my fellow commissioners.
Thanks. Uh, real quick, uh, just want to get involved in the community. I've spent six years on Prescott Isle Advisory Committee in the past, uh, been involved in other areas, uh, love the community and I'm here to serve it, and I hope to make a difference.
You will, we know that. Thank you very much for you serving, uh, and representing the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move to, uh, appointments. Uh, city clerk?
Yes, Your Honor, this evening, we have one appointment. Kevin Piggott of the Aging Services Advisory Committee, healthcare representative for a term ending eight, one, 2016.
Thank you. Commissioners? Commissioner Ryan?
I move we appoint Kevin Piggott to the Aging Services Advisory Committee as a healthcare representative for a term ending August first, 2016.
Thank you. Second, Commissioner Coyne? Commissioner Ryan, anything further?
No, I just, we have some very high-quality people agreeing to serve on that committee, and this kind of fills it out, I think.
Thank you. Commissioner Coyne?
Nothing further.
Any other commissioner at this time? Seeing none, all asked a question, all in favor?
Yes.
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 Oppose, motion passed six to zero. Thank you. And with that, we'll move to public comment. Comments should not exceed three minutes per person. Citizens may reserve time to speak on agenda items. This may result in an item being moved up on agenda at the mayor's discretion. Anyone wishing to address the commission at this time?
Hi, I'm Don Grisham, I reside at 903 Wilson Street. I just want to reserve, uh, time for, uh, agenda item number four on the YMCA.
Just a second, sir. Number four, what, how you say your name?
Uh, Don Grisham.
Don? G E R?
Uh, G R I S H A M. Just like the author.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm Lisa Combs Giroux, I reside at 1330 Woodridge, and if you have any questions on item four, I'm here to answer them.
Okay, thank you, Lisa. Anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time?
Jacob Feather, 1708 Woodland. I'm here in response to the challenge presented by Matt Luttenberger at your July 29th meeting to develop a plan to add edible landscaping to the underutilized public land, and also the opportunity to put the $9,000 recently awarded to the city of Marquette to good use. Last year, I created a group called Marquette Public Orchard. Our initial goal was to take the portion of the bike path corridor that runs west from the Marquette Commons and transform it into a food forest. This would mean that the recreational corridor would be lined with a variety of fruit trees and bushes, and organized in a way that would mimic the natural beauty and variety of a forest, rather than being designed like a commercial orchard. The design would be integrated into the existing landscape organically, the fruit would be free for public picking, and the planting and pruning would be done by volunteers organized by our group. There are many groups in the community that are excited about this plan. I've had positive responses from the Marquette Food Co-op, Transition Marquette County, the NTN, Marquette Growth, the Marquette Beautification and Restoration Committee, and the Marquette County Conservation District. Last fall, I brought the idea to the Parks and Rec Department, who expressed their support. I'm here tonight asking for both funding for the project and the permission to plant. The city was recently awarded $9,000 through the My Big Green Gym Challenge to be put toward community health and recreation, and I can think of no bigger bang for the buck than planting extensive edible landscaping that will provide both multi-generational recreational activity and a sustainable and nutritious local food source. Working with the Conservation District, we estimated that we could purchase over 200 fruit trees and 300 berry bushes for around $5,000. With $9,000, Marquette Public Orchard could strategically expand our plan to include the entirety of the city bike loop, and also various other public sites at the discretion of the city, including sections of parks and even on the lawn of City Hall. This expanded plan will be implemented over the course of the next several years. We have seen residents with buckets picking fresh ingredients for a pie. We plan to make these sites much more common. We plan to make Marquette a world-class destination for recreational fruit harvesting, for both locals and tourists, and as a model for other communities to follow. We believe that we can do this with $9,000 and the permission to plant.
Thirty seconds, sir.
Tonight, I'm asking for the support of the city commission in this endeavor, and for the city's staff to provide a streamlined and efficient path forward. I'd like to begin putting the first new trees into the ground in early spring of 2014.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time?
I'm Mike Florida. I live at 1302 North McClellan, and I just want to take some time to thank all the voters who voted in this past election. It's my opinion that one of the best ways to honor our current servicemen and servicewomen and all of our veterans is to vote, and I want to congratulate everyone who voted. I want to thank everyone who voted for me. And I'd ask people to continue, continue to support me, and those who didn't vote me, vote for me, to reconsider and think it over. But thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time?
Scott Guidbeck, 1361 Ortman Road. I'm here on the subject of, focuses at Marquette Lakeview Arena, and it's in regard to the plexiglass that surrounds both the rinks, Russell and Olson, in that facility. And there's been quite a, quite a bit of improvements at Lakeview Arena. I'm involved in junior hockey, senior hockey, many aspects, and, you know, there's been a new roof, there's new lighting, new scoreboard, fresh paint. But the only problem that really, I think, still, you know, exists is the viewing of that plexiglass. The Olson Arena is, is pretty much a standing room-only viewing, the smaller of the two rinks. And the Russell has on the west end some handicap accessibility with a ramp where a wheelchair would, you know, go up to that plexiglass and try to view events at Lakeview Arena, and it's quite difficult. The east end seems to be a, quite a bit of a hangout of the Russell Arena for a lot of the, you know, men or adults, just anybody that really wants to take in, just wants to do a standing room type thing versus sitting in, plenty of seating in the Russell, but they, they like to watch that end-to-end action. There's, there's puck marks, there's hockey stick marks, dust. My daughter even thinks that there's some blood, you know, on the plexiglass that she's, you know, witnessed. So I have talked to John Swenson at Lakeview, and I've been in contact with Mayor DePietro a couple of times recently in regard to this. And I guess I understand, you know, replacing the whole plexiglass would be a, probably a budget problem, but I think somebody in the city should take a look at trying to clean in some source with a, with a solvent and some elbow grease to maybe try to remove, you know, some of that buildup, again, of just material that I think can come off. I'm not sure, you know, as far as what the results would be, but it is, we do have a junior, junior team that's coming in this, this year, the Marquette Royals, a junior tier-three team, and they want to do, you know, promotion and get people to come into the arena. And I just think it would be a real finishing touch if we could, you know, do something or try to do something with the plexiglass to, you know, put the, put one of the final touches on, on the arena and its, and its viewing, you know, viewing abilities. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time?
Joe Constance, 640 South Lake Shore Boulevard. I'd like to reserve time for item number eight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Frank Jeff Berito, 350 East Ridge, Marquette, to speak on items five and six. These are my opinions. Two rowers told me they wanted their boathouse near the current storage area all along, but were asked to consider the wooded location, something to do with the nearby townhouses. City officials knew nothing of this boathouse preference. They say the rowers keep changing their minds. So who's influencing the rowers? They have no desire or incentive to leave their current site at the safest, best possible location where a boathouse and an observation platform can be built into a hill, but without destroying prime woodland. To add insult to injury, the westernmost strip of the Flounder's green space was narrowed by several feet, with a few dozen stumps now visible from the trail, a barbaric act to keep the vagrants out. Vagrants will just walk to the next place, then that place gets hacked until you're willing to deal with the problem. Vagrants have legs. They leave while your stumpage poses a lasting eyesore. The department had fixated too closely on the matter at hand, losing sight of a more important matter, that being the resource itself. Assumingly, he's lived here all his life and he knows of nowhere else, thus he doesn't realize the specialness of what we have. All top city jobs call for a person who possesses this sensitivity, which there's no way to teach. Last summer, the manager and I spoke proactively of this scenario after a smaller mishap at Chyris Park. Surely, he covered the matter with his department head then. Besides that, I've occasionally asked the commission for due public process prior to the alteration of our green space. How could such an unauthorized cutting ever occur for such a foolish reason? Our next opportunity not to squander is to rid our midst of that awful coal plant to the north, now that its output will no longer justify the costs of operation, maintenance, and modifications. Olmstead never envisioned that albatross. For the love of Marquette, our health, and our visitors, please restore the scenic drive to Presque Isle Park. In an August 6th article regarding truck route financing, Mr. Ryan has quoted saying, "I think we have to be proactive here and really start making plans. We kind of have to face up to the reality," end quote. He and I agree, however, no one addresses why you weren't proactive years ago when you knew full well of the preferred haul route. That didn't stop several of you from endorsing the mine. At your July 29th tourist park hearing, Mr. Ryan asked if the plan was a guidepost or subject to change to influence the rest of you to vote for it despite the concerns. Of course, the tourist park plan is changeable. That doesn't keep proponents from referencing master plans to promote their ambitions. In fact, Mr. Ryan himself mentioned the developable portions as shown in the city master plan as if gospel, and he calls tourist park a unique facility. It won't stay unique if the threatened woodland is compromised.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time? Anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time?
Dick Gunther, 14 East Nicolay Boulevard. I missed, I had another meeting, so I missed the presentation by the Board of Light and Power, so some of my remarks might not be totally in line with what their reply or their presentation was. But I read the article in the paper, and they were talking about a substantial increase in rates, and they gave, in the paper at least, they gave no reason other than the fact that they hadn't raised them for three years. I don't see that as a cause for raising them, just because they haven't been raised. I question their need for funds in the fact that quite frequently, they have funds available to donate. They donate to worthy causes, I will agree with that, but I don't think it's for them to determine what they consider worthy causes for my money and your money. It's the city people's money. It is not something that Mr. Kidda or his board of directors should decide where it should go. That is for the people that pay for that power and provide that power company with its money. And therefore, I don't think that they should be donating $50,000 to the museum or $20,000 to whatever cause they feel is worthy. That is up to the people to decide and for the people to donate that money. So if that's why they need money and need a rate increase, I think they need to reexamine their budget. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time? Anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time? Seeing none, I'll close this portion of public comment and move to number three, consent agenda. Commissioners, what's your pleasure? Commissioner Ryan?
I move the consent agenda be approved.
Thank you. Second, Commissioner Combenci. Commissioner Ryan, anything further?
These are routine matters, and this is the best way to move with, deal with these issues.
Thank you. Commissioner Combenci?
Nothing further.
Any other commissioner? Seeing none, I'll ask question. All in favor? Say yes.
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 Oppose. Motion passes six to zero. Thank you. With that, we'll move to number four. YMCA addendum to lease agreement, city attorney. City clerk?
Thank you, Your Honor. Background, at the June 24th, 2013 meeting, the city commission approved a lease agreement addendum to the, to extend the lease through December 31st, 2052. The YMCA attorney has requested additional language that the USDA recently identified as a necessary condition for funding approval. The city attorney reviewed the requirement and revised the lease agreement addendum to accommodate in section five as follows. In the, in the event the USDA, as YMCA's lender acquires the YMCA's interest in the lease through foreclosure, voluntary conveyance, abandonment, or otherwise, the USDA shall have all of the YMCA's rights and obligation as set forth, set forth in this lease. Following the city's approval and subject to any terms and condition as established by the city at the time of the approval is given, and subject to any restrictions recorded in the chain of title for the land upon which the lease hold is located, the USDA shall have the right to sublet or sell the leasehold improvement. If the provision were to be exercised, the city maintains and reserves the right to impose any and all additional terms and conditions, subject to restrictions recorded in the chain of title for the land upon which the leasehold is located. Fiscal effect, no change in the fiscal effect or lease duration as previously approved. Recommendation, approve a lease agreement addendum between the city and the YMCA of Marquette County through December 31st, 2052, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the agreement, alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, city clerk. At this time, I'll have that gentleman come up here that wanted to address number four.
Again, my name is Don Grisham. I reside at 903 Wilson Street, and I'm just available if there's any questions regarding the, the question before you. It really is a matter of, apparently, it was a slip, if you will, in terms of the legalese between the USDA and the way the attorneys looked at it. There, it appears to be a correction that needed to be done, so... But if you have any questions, I'd be happy, or Lisa Combs to address that.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, what's your pleasure? Commissioner Coyne?
I move we approve a lease agreement addendum between the city and the YMCA of Marquette County through December 31st, 2052, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the agreement.
Thank you, sir. Second, Commissioner Amy.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Commissioner Coyne?
The only thing I can see is that it's a prudent thing for the government agency, the USDA, to have that right, and I think our attorney made it clear that we have the approval of all the things that they do. And they're not going to loan anybody $3 million if they don't have any capital to back it up with or not, I mean, with any security. So, I mean, it's just good standard business procedure.
Thank you. Commissioner Amy?
Well, I guess that, you know, I can certainly see the, why the USDA would want this, and I wouldn't want to not approve this to hold up the project, but I do have a question of staff. In the lease language, or the, the new language, it says that the, in the event the USDA does have to, or YMCA defaults and USDA forecloses on this, they'll have all the YMCA's rights and obligations, this is set forth in the lease. And then in the next paragraph, we say, "If the provision were to be exercised, the city maintains and reserves the right to impose any and all additional terms and conditions, subject to restrictions recorded in the chain of title." It seems like the lease would severely limit our ability to, to impose changes or conditions.
This is language that's been agreed to by the USDA, so I'm assuming it's okay with them. Essentially, what we have is a situation, they'll stand and step into the shoes of the Y, have the right to sublet it, but if they're going to sublet it to a profit-making organization, we might want a little more consideration than we're giving the Y, and I think we want to keep that card. Second thing is, you know, that land is subject to reverter. We got a waiver for that, but they're going to be subject to it, and we wanted that spelled out in this addendum.
Right, yeah. I appreciate that, but it, I, could we change, we can't change the terms of the lease that we, we entered in with the Y, and that's what the, the...
They will...
That's what USDA would inherit.
They would inherit that, but we have, we've, it's subject to our approval of any additional terms that may be established by the commission.
I see, okay.
That's what we're talking about.
Yeah. I didn't read that carefully enough, but thank you.
Any other? Commissioner Combenci?
If I could just ask the city attorney that the city of Marquette, we are the sole proprietor on the deed, right? We own and control the, the deed?
Yes, that's our property, but it was, if I remember back, I think it was conveyed to us by Northern. I think there's a right of reverter if we cease to use it in a certain manner. And so we want to put that in any document that we, you know, lease land, this land to.
I just want to make sure before I vote on this that that's taken care of, or we would have the ability, should this happen, to, I guess, have control over that, or...
We can only exercise, obviously, so much control, but we want them to know that there's a right of reverter clause in the deed that we took, and that they're going to take subject to that. So we want to make sure that that's clear to them, but the other, additional terms that we hopefully never get to, this could be an academic discussion, but it's something USDA wanted, and so we wanted a little of our own, and we worked out this compromise.
Thank you. Any other commissioner at this time? Seeing none, there's a motion by Commissioner Coyne, seconded by Commissioner Amy, to accept the recommend, recommendation of agenda number four, and approve a lease agreement addendum between the city and YMCA of Marquette County through December 31st, 2052, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the agreement. All in favor? Say yes.
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 Oppose. Motion passes six to zero. Thank you. We'll move to number five, city strategic plan. City clerk?
Yes, Your Honor. Background, the new city charter requires the city commission to prepare a strategic plan for the advancement of the city. By no later than January 1st, 2014, the city manager is required to recommend a process to be approved by the city commission for obtaining public input on the plan. to be approved by the City Commission for obtaining public input on the plan. Within one year after adoption of this process, the strategic plan shall be submitted to the commission for its approval and use. At its March 25, 2013 meeting, the City Commission appointed a three-member subcommittee consisting of Commissioners Coyne, Neme, and Ryan to work on, work with the city manager in creating a process to develop commission goals and objectives for the city strategic plan. After several work sessions, the city manager has prepared the attached draft strategic plan for the City Commission to consider. Fiscal effect, none by this action. Recommendation, adopt a city strategic plan as recommended by the subcommittee and city manager, alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, city clerk. At this time, Frank, Mr. Berto, would like to address this issue.
Thank you. These are my opinions. I protest the three members who were chosen for the subcommittee because they're the most gung-ho on development, and therefore, the most apt to compromise on our green space. They're also the most prone to say in the years ahead, it's right here in the strategic plan, let's run with it. All three members should not be facsimiles of one each other. The trouble is, no sound alternative exists with Mr. DePietro and Schneider leaving and Mr. Stonehouse still on board. Our only hope is Ms. Compenzi, but she'd also be the best hope for the subcommittee that negotiates the mine. No one likely has time for both. It's hard to tell which item is more important, however, the strategic plan covers a wider scope and is a regular planning process, while the haul route ought to never have become an issue to begin with. Due to matters that are much beyond our control, there's no decent trio to choose from to study a document that's as important as the strategic plan. A first recommendation is to delay the strategic planning process until the next commission is seated, so he can choose the subcommittee members from a wider pool. If we cannot wait, please replace Mr. Ryan or Coyne with Ms. Compenzi, if she's willing to donate her time.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, Commissioner Ryan?
I move we adopt the city strategic planning process as recommended by the subcommittee and city manager.
Thank you. Commissioner Neme?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll support that motion.
Thank you. Commissioner Ryan, anything further?
I think it needs to be emphasized that the role of the committee is through. This was simply the way that we would develop a process that this commission would use to develop a strategic plan. It is the responsibility of the manager, as designated by the charter, to come up with that process. We used a, our own process of sitting down with the manager and agreeing on a plan, and this is simply a plan to create a strategic plan in which all commissioners will be involved.
Thank you. Commissioner Neme?
I concur with Commissioner Ryan, that, you know, we, our subcommittee work in regards to strategic plan is completed, and this is the process we recommend, and I assume we are going to adopt. There was one other issue that we did discuss at the subcommittee level, and that's a, an interim set of goals until a strategic plan is proposed, and perhaps after, after this motion, we might want to entertain a little discussion on that, that process, if the commission would indulge.
Okay, thank you. Any other commissioner at this time? Commissioner Schneider?
I just want to thank the commissioners and city manager for, for putting this together. You know, I think it's really quite critical for where we're going, and I appreciate putting in the extra volunteer, well, for the commissioners, extra volunteer hours, and, you know, for the city manager, definitely, putting the thought into the, the future of our city.
Thank you. Commissioner Compenzi?
I'd just like to thank the subcommittee, too. I know, working on the evaluations, it is a lot of extra time, volunteer time, so I'd like to thank the three of you that served on this. I'm interested, I guess, see how the hybrid approach goes. One thing I think I'd like to see, and I'll just voice this now, is, you know, as we start this, a commission work session, maybe the first one, I think it'd be good to do a retreat, just to kind of get away and, and spend not just two hours at a work session, but maybe a whole day really diving into this, because as I look at the timeline, it's, it's pretty quick for all that we have to review, so. And the last thing I did like, Commissioner Neme's comment about an interim set of, you know, a strategic plan and all the assets that we're going to work towards within this next year, so I think that's appropriate, too.
Thank you. Any other commissioner at this time? Seeing none, there's a motion by Commissioner Ryan, seconded by Commissioner Neme, to accept a recommendation, agenda five, and adopt a city strategic plan as recommended by the subcommittee and city manager. With that, I'll ask a question. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose? Motion passes six to zero. Thank you. With that, Commissioner Neme?
If we could have indulgence of the commission, if we could maybe briefly discuss that issue of an interim set of goals and objectives, once the strategic plan, I think, is completed, that will be kind of a natural follow-on from that, that effort for, for giving the city manager and staff a, a list of priorities of the city and commission, but without a strategic plan, we have to have some sort of process to do that, and I guess, and perhaps, I certainly would like the, my fellow subcommittee members to weigh in on this, but perhaps the, the effort to do this would be the, for each commissioner submitting a list of goals to the city manager, he would compile them, send them out to the commission, and then at a work session, we could, we could review them and, and do it, and approve them at a city commission meeting, but this is something that, you know, we, we've been lacking all these, these many years, and, and I know when I first came on the commission, Commissioner Ryan had, had suggested, and we've talked about it since then, and we, we tried, I think, last year sometime to, to do it, and we, we almost got there, but I think we're closer than we've ever been before, so I defer to my fellow subcommittee members.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to, Commissioner Ryan?
I would just add, I agree, and as Commissioner Neme pointed out, I've always felt we should do this once a year, just sit down and talk about what we think the, our goals should be for the year ahead, and I think this gives us that opportunity.
Thank you. Commissioner Coyne?
In follow-up to that, I think it's important for us to do that, particularly when new commissioners come on. This next election, there'll be two new commissioners, and the following year, there'll be three. And when you're new, you really don't have any clue where everybody's going. I mean, you have to kind of get it by osmosis over a three-year, six-month period, so this way, it's, seven people have agreed, these are the things we want to work on, and we are working on for the next year, and then when the new commissioners come on, they can add or argue that they don't want to do that, but it, it provides some direction for everybody to kind of go in the same way, so that's, I think, a very important reason to do it.
Okay, thank you. Any other commissioner? Seeing none, with that, I'll move on to agenda number six.
We have to vote, Your Honor.
Okay. We voted on the...
Just one last comment. We don't have a motion make, but perhaps the city manager has made some notes, and we'll, we'll bring something to our attention, as he typically does. Thank you.
City manager?
Yes, Your Honor, it's exactly as Commissioner Neme's pointed out, we'll follow up.
Okay, thank you very much. With that, we'll move to number six, agenda number six, Lundine Mining Corporation Negotiations, Subcommittee, city clerk?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. Background, the City Commission convened a work session on August 6 to discuss building a relationship with the Lundine Mining Corporation. As a result of, the commission, as a result, the commission identified a need to update the city traffic ordinance to allow heavy truck traffic to use the proposed haul route, as well as identify additional truck routes through the city for both north-south and east-westbound traffic. The city has been working with neighboring jurisdictions to identify short, medium, and long-term alternatives for managing regional truck traffic. The City Commission identified the need to reassess their previous position regarding haul traffic and enter into negotiations with Lundine regarding potential solutions. The commission determined that city policies need to reflect current issues and trends. As a result, they identified the need to appoint a subcommittee of three commissioners to lead negotiations with Lundine, with the results intended to direct the city's support for moving forward. Fiscal effect to be determined as a result of negotiations. Recommendation, appoint three city commissioners to lead negotiations with Lundine Mining Corporation with the support of the city manager, alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, city clerk. At this time, Mr. Frank Berto would like to address agenda number six.
These are my opinions. It's great you're addressing this matter, however, this is the epitome of a reactive measure rather than proactive. The question lingers as to why you neglected to form a subcommittee or to negotiate with the mine years ago, when the preferred haul route was detailed in the mining application. Two items in a row were dealing with subcommittees of three, and we faced the same dilemma with two members leaving. This includes the formerly best-suited member, that is, before he relinquished his soul to an exploitive entity. Even if he wasn't resigning, he couldn't participate on account of his newfound conflict of interest. His conflict is also responsible for him not running again, because he no longer has the time now that he's enterprising on the mine's funding. If not for his two conflicts of interest, he'd be the best candidate for the negotiation subcommittee. Again, I ask that you appoint Ms. Compenzi to serve if she has the time, since she's had some planning expertise, or if possible, delay the process until the new commission is seated, although time is probably of the essence, since you've procrastinated on this industrial hauling matter for years. If possible, route trucks along the power line corridor rather than obliterating fresh terrain or subjecting the north side to a dangerous traffic situation, and by all means, do not support the mine. Without the mine, this costly negotiation process is totally unnecessary.
Thank you, sir. And with that recommendation, appoint three city commissioners to lead negotiations with Lundine Mining Corporation with the support of the city manager. Commissioners, I would like to, Commissioner Neme?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve appointing three commissioners to lead negotiations to Lundine Mining Corporation.
Thank you, sir. Second?
I'll second the motion, Your Honor.
Thank you. Commissioner Neme, anything further?
Nothing further, I think it's covered in that, and then after we approve this, you can make some appointments.
Thank you. Commissioner Ryan?
Yes, I support this. I've, I've made it clear in the past, I do not want to serve on this committee, even though I haven't worked in mining for ten years, some people believe I somehow have a connection to the mining industry. I would hope that our longer-serving commissioners could be appointed to this assignment.
With that, Commissioner Compenzi?
I'd just like to publicly say that I, I would be willing to volunteer for this, even though we're not voting on it.
Any other commissioner? Commissioner Schneider?
Just want to make clear to the commissioners and public that I will not be voting on this, because Lundine does provide funding for the organization I work for.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Coyne, will you be interested in serving on this? Okay, yeah. Who'll vote on this first? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose? Motion passes six, five, five to zero. And record showing Commissioner Schneider abstaining. Thank you. And with that, Commissioner Compenzi, you're willing to serve on this? Subcommittee, Commissioner Coyne?
Yes.
And Commissioner Stonehouse, that is absent tonight. I feel he would be a good addition to it, so. With that, we have our three commissioners. City clerk, you have that? Okay, thank you. With that, we'll move to number seven. Agenda number seven, Prescott Gazebo Roof Replacement, city clerk?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Background, the Prescott Gazebo roof, roof is at the end of its useful life and in need of replacement. The roof is expected to have a life of thirty-plus years with little or no maintenance. Three local contractors who perform installation of roofing were asked to quote, quote the project based upon a common set of specifications. The quotes were summarized with Rainy Creek Construction of Nagani, Michigan, with a low bid meeting specifications at $6,350. Fiscal effect, the FY 1213 capital outlay budget allocated $35,000 in the Public Works Department Fund of the General Fund for this project. Recommendation, determine there is no advantage to competitive bidding and award the contract or quote in amount not to exceed $6,350 for the Prescott Gazebo Roof Replacement to Rainy Creek Construction of Nagani, Michigan, being the low quote meeting specifications, alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, city clerk. Commissioners? Commissioner Ryan?
I move we determine there's no advantage to competitive bidding and award the quote in an amount not to exceed $6,350 for Prescott Gazebo Roof Replacement to Rainy Creek Construction of Nagani, Michigan, being the low quote meeting specifications.
Thank you. Sir, second? Commissioner Schneider?
Support.
Thank you. Commissioner Ryan?
Project needs to be done, it's the lowest price received, qualified bidders. Let's go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Schneider?
Nothing further.
Thank you. Any other commissioner at this time? I'll ask the question. All in favor of the agenda number seven? Say yes.
Yes.
Oppose? Motion passes six to zero. Thank you. With that, we'll move to agenda number eight, update on negotiations with Landing Development Group Two. City clerk?
Yes, Your Honor. Background, a meeting was conducted on July 15, 2013, with representatives of the city, Marquette Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, MBRA, and the Landing Development Group Two, LDG Two. The purpose of this meeting was to continue negotiations regarding the public parking facility in conjunction with the next phase of development at the Founder's Landing Development Site. As a result, agreement was reached that pursuant to the interests of all parties, the MBRA would assume the lead for negotiating a development agreement with LDG Two. In this role, the MBRA will become responsible for all aspects of project, project negotiations, including as applicable commitments to pursue public financing necessary for implementation. If so requested, the MBRA, if so requested by the MBRA, the full faith and credit of the city may be required to issue associated financing, which is currently anticipated for solicitation in 2015. The attached resolution was approved by the MBRA at its August 8 meeting. Fiscal effect, none. Recommendation, no action is required of the city at this time, alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, city clerk. I believe Mr. Joe Constance would like to address agenda number eight.
Joe Constance, 640 South Lake Shore Boulevard. Just on this item, I, I want to tell the commission that we are strongly in favor of this, of this avenue. We've been working on the structure of the parking structure for about a year and a half. We've had dozens and dozens of meetings with city representatives in our group. Just to let you know, a little background as to the scope, we've spent over $20,000 this year on legal fees, working on these negotiations, so unlike the Board of Light and Power, we do have a limited budget. I'm just kidding, I know they do, too. But, but we, we are very much interested in moving this along. We are not able to do any construction this year because of this lack of an agreement. It's not because we didn't want to build on parcel three this year, we did. We have tenants, and we have owners that are waiting for structures to be built, so we do want to move ahead. You've got a resolution here that was passed by the Brownfield Authority last Thursday, and there's one on the second page of it, it says, now therefore, be it resolved that upon written request by the city, the authority is authorized and directed to engage in good-faith negotiations. So we were sort of perplexed this morning when we were looking at the agenda item, and it said, no action required by the City Commission at this time. I thought that the Brownfield Authority was asking for a written request from the commission, asking them to be the negotiating party, and our group and our legal attorney is, is asking that there be action by the commission, saying we would like the Brownfield Authority to, to negotiate. So we were hoping that there would be an action and a directive to the city manager saying, would you please send a letter to the Brownfield Authority authorizing this action? So hopefully, that's where this ends up tonight.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
City commissioners? Commissioner Schneider?
Well, there is no recommended action to be moved on, but I would like to be able to open this up for discussion. to open this up for discussion. You know, according to the...do we need to vote on that to open for discussion?
Yeah.
Well, then I ask that we open this up for discussion. Suspend the rules.
Okay, there's a motion to suspend the rules on Agenda Number Eight. By Commissioner Schneider, seconded by Commissioner Coyne. Commissioner Schneider, you have the floor?
Sure. Well, I guess with the residents' concern about the project and about directing staff to draft a letter to the authority, I guess I would like to ask the other commissioners' opinion as well as the city manager's understanding of what the authority would need from us to be able to act on this.
Thank you, City Manager.
Thank you, Your Honor. And I'll ask my city attorney to chime in, too. It's kind of half a dozen of one, half a dozen of the other. I can certainly write a letter asking the Brownfield Authority to do this, or you can direct me to. It's whatever you prefer to do. I have no intention of not writing the letter. And for the record, we're the ones who brought this before as a recommendation to the group. It's all mutually agreed. I've shared my views with the commission on some of the history, I believe, how we got to this point and why this makes sense moving forward. So I would expect as early as tomorrow morning getting a letter, probably an email. I think in the digital age, that should suffice notifying Sherry to move forward. So the big reason why we put this on the agenda this evening is to make sure that the commission understood we've successfully concluded an agreement on this, that the Brownfield isn't just kind of unilaterally deciding to take action and step into the shoes of the city without making sure that the full coordination and notification was in place. So this really serves as a good example of the kind of relationship that the Brownfield Board would like the city commission to have confidence in. And so that's why they passed it as a resolution. That's why they wanted to bring it to the city commission's attention.
Okay, thank you. Just a minute. Commissioner Coyne, you seconded this. Did you have any comment?
I just seconded this.
Yep. So one more question, and this is, I think, more for the benefit of the public who may be listening on this. For having the authority take over the negotiations on this, I guess I'm wondering at what point does the city commission and city residents have the opportunity to step in and voice their opinions before anything is finalized?
Thank you. Let me only offer, just as a matter of protocol, we have our executive director and our vice chair from the Brownfield Authority here. They can explain their public process, but the intention in turning it over to the Brownfield is to make them exclusively responsible for the project from this point forward. And at some point, the only public process that the city commission would see would be if they get to a point where they decide they need to issue debt to see the project through, they would come back to the city and ask for our full faith and credit. And that's really the only time that it would come back before the city commission publicly. But I'd like to ask maybe Sherry or Vice Chair Campana if they'd like to step forward, maybe. I believe there's a question about what kind of public process the MBRA operates under, and perhaps you could provide some...
You can use this one here. Thank you.
Yes, and thank you for passing the resolution.
Could you identify yourself for the public, please?
Yes, I'm sorry. Sherry Davie, the Brownfield Director, 98 Cedar Lane, Nagani.
Thank you.
We did pass the resolution at our Brownfield meeting last Thursday, and as the city manager has explained, this is going to, in essence, hand this project off to the Brownfield Authority to handle. We are working with Miller Canfield, who is the organization that recommended that to make sure that the Brownfield had the full authority to do this, that a written letter from the city manager on behalf of the city commission with approval was required. So that's why this step. And as you're aware, that with the change in the charter, the city really isn't in the building construction of parking lots, and the city manager has, I think, advised that this is the role of a Brownfield, and we have a tremendous board with a lot of interest and experience from very many directions that I think we're going to be able to do some very good things with the exciting projects that we're currently working on and will be working on.
Thank you. City Attorney?
Oh, I guess I'm following up on the city manager. I was simply going to say that as the city manager said, it's six one half dozen of another. Often, the city commission will by vote direct the city manager to write a letter such as this. So that would certainly be appropriate in this case, or as the city manager suggests, he could write it on his own. I don't know what the council on the other side really is looking for, but the document does say by written request of the city, the Brownfield Authority is authorized to engage in negotiations.
Sorry, Your Honor. We would anticipate it'd be about a two- or three-sentence letter pursuant to the agreement, so...
Okay, thank you. And with that, Commissioner Companzi, did you have something? Commissioner Coyne? Thank you.
I would like to make a motion to instruct the city manager to write a letter regarding authorizing Brownfield to engage in good faith negotiations with the developer regarding the parking lot development agreement.
Commissioner Neamy? Thank you.
I'll second that motion.
No, I don't.
I just have a question, I guess, on the paragraph we're talking about. Number one, in the latter part of it, it says that blah, 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 and that the authority would purchase from the developer the public improvements and address inter alia all aspects of said purchase, including but not limited to the purchase price, the design, the timing of construction, and financing associated with the construction, operation, maintenance, and deferred long-term maintenance, and acquisition. So that means if it's turned over to us, or the Brownfield will keep doing it in perpetuity as long as they're around and we thereafter, but the long-term maintenance operation, et cetera, will all be planned and financed properly in the process?
We will be beginning the negotiation.
Ma'am, Sherry?
Well...
To the microphone, so that it'll be recorded?
We will be looking at beginning the negotiation that is going to cover all of those topics.
Because somewhere in here, it said something about that you wouldn't be...I guess it's number four. Shall not be deemed an assumption by the authority of any obligation of the city, if any, under the plan or reimbursement agreement. I think that is one of our obligations under the plan or reimbursement agreement, isn't it?
Not...no, it's...you know, that's a subject of discussion. The position we've taken is there are no obligations. There are contingencies, and it's based on a number of things happening, so that's what it is.
It'll all be tied up in a nice, neat package by the end of this negotiations.
Correct.
Good.
Yes.
Good. It'd be nice to see it go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Companzi?
I just have a question. If there is bonding for debt, is that shown on the city's, I guess, debt page, or is this completely separate? Separate?
The Brownfield is actually considered a component unit of the city, so it's not required we show it, but typically for the Brownfield, I have been showing it, but if it's something you don't want to see, I can easily take it off.
Well, just as long as there's no confusion that it's one of our debts, I guess. I know I've sat on there at the last budget session, so I just wanted to make sure that...
Thank you. Commissioner Ryan?
Yes, I guess I just have to say, and I want us to go ahead with this, but as Gary pointed out, the Brownfield is part of the city, and yet the city couldn't make this work, but the Brownfield can. I'm not sure why that is, but I guess anything that moves it forward is worthwhile, but it's kind of unique that a group that we've appointed and that operates as part of the city can make this go forward, but the rest of the city couldn't, so...I'm not sure what kind of message that sends us, but I'm just glad it's moving forward.
Thank you. Commissioner Schneider?
Well, I'm always hesitant to give up any authority that we may have or may think we have to other people that we appoint. I guess, being the city council, I kind of like that authority to rest with us, but knowing that development of, I think, a really key downtown area has been held up because of difficulties. If this is the process forward, this is definitely the process forward, and I hope that it works out well for both the city residents as well as the developers. That said, since this is my chance to bring it up, I'm really concerned about the amount of parking we have downtown already that is greatly underutilized, and feel that municipally taking on any debt to add parking is financially unwise, and I think it's socially unwise, because I don't think it's going to be as important as it is now in 20, 30, 40 years, and then we're going to have a structure that I don't think will be as utilized, and definitely have a lot of maintenance issues. So, you know, I have concerns there. I hope the developers hear that and just have it in their minds when moving forward. I hope the rest of the commission and public hears that. As we're relinquishing control over how things will go with the parking structure, I feel that I had to air those thoughts.
Thank you. Commissioner Companzi?
Just one more thought. As the Brownfield takes this over, do they also have to, I guess, negotiate whether they own part of this, or...so that's all part of...so technically, then, if they default on it, it is the responsibility of the city? Should they...
Yeah, as a component of the city, any deal they reach ultimately, if they fail to operate in accordance with the agreement, the city would assume that responsibility.
One last thought, I guess, because I brought it up before. This is a good reason, I think, to show the Brownfield debt on our financial reports, even though it's not part of our city debt, simply for the fact that it could be, so...
Thank you. Any other commissioner at this time? Seeing none, there's a motion by Commissioner Coyne, seconded by Commissioner Neamy, to City Clerk, the rest of the story?
Yes, Your Honor, to direct the city manager to authorize the MBRA to...let's see if I have it here. Oops. Okay, just simply to write a letter to the MBRA authorizing their next actions according to the handout on item eight.
Thank you. Is that correct, Commissioner Coyne?
Yes.
With that, I'll ask the question. All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Oppose? Motion passes six to zero. We'll go back to the main motion. Commissioner Schneider? No action necessary?
No.
Okay. Okay, thank you. City Attorney? With that, we'll move to number nine, full faith and credit pledge for Brownfield Liberty Way Project. City Clerk?
Thank you, Your Honor. Background, the MBRA will issue tax increment bonds in an amount not to exceed $750,000 to finance the cost of public infrastructure improvements to various eligible activities for the Liberty Way Project. It is anticipated that tax capture from that Brownfield district will cover the debt service costs associated with this financing. However, in order for the MBRA to issue said bonds, a pledge from the city for limited full faith and credit is needed. The pledge means that should the tax capture not be sufficient to cover the debt service costs, then the city will take measures to pay any insufficiency. In 2010, the city made a similar pledge for construction of the Founder's Landing Boardwalk and Seawall Project. Fiscal effect, none unless the tax capture falls short of projections, recommendation, approve a resolution to pledge limited tax, full faith, and credit in support of the Marquette Brownfield Redevelopment Authority Tax Increment Bonds. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
I would move approval of the recommendation.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Commissioner Schneider?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Anything further?
We've been on record as supporting this project, and we want to see this continue moving forward, so this is the next step in that process.
Thank you. Commissioner Schneider?
I agree with Commissioner Ryan. I think he said it well.
Thank you. Any other commissioner? Commissioner Companzi?
Just a question. What's the timeframe for the anticipated tax capture to reimburse that $750,000 to finance it? Was it 15 years, or am I thinking of this?
The estimated timeframe that we'll cover is however long it can last, which is estimated to be 15 years.
Any other commissioner at this time? Don't see any. Thank you. Seeing no further questions, there's a motion by Commissioner Ryan, seconded by Commissioner Schneider, to accept a recommendation of Agenda Nine and approve a resolution to pledge limited tax, full faith, and credit in support of Marquette Brownfield Authority Tax Increment Bonds. With that, I'll ask a question. All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Oppose? Motion passes six to zero. Thank you. With that, I'll move to public comment. Public comments should be limited to three minutes per person. Please state your name and physical address when making public comments. Anyone wishing to address the commission at this time? Anyone wishing to address the commission at this time? You already stated your name, physical address, so you don't have to repeat it. Thank you.
I'm looking forward to commissioner comments in regards to the public orchard idea, and also if anyone is interested in joining the movement. We have a Facebook page, Marquette Public Orchard, and we'd be happy to have anyone join. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time? You don't have to state your name and physical address. You already did that previously.
I have a couple of questions. One of the items on the consent agenda, number L, was a replace the railing on the Prescott Gazebo for $7,000, and then under new business, we replaced the roof on it for $6,000. Sounds to me like a reversal of financing there. I can't imagine railing costing more than roofing, but that's my question. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time?
These are my opinions. For years, I've urged you to prove my specifics generally wrong under the promise that I'd then speak only on agenda items. The challenge remains open until the end of time. One way to rid yourselves of me entirely is for Mr. Ryan to expound in his July 29 statement that read, "There are some better communities than Marquette, and many much worse." Let him tell us which few places he considers better, and I'll move there. In fact, they've likely been there. I could live almost anywhere but chose this special place because it is the best and probably will remain so through our lifetimes. July 29, Mr. Coyne said of Marquette, "It's the best despite what we hear often, that we're the worst ever. For years and years, some people feel that we're the best." By saying "we're," is he referring to the city as the best, or to you people? Careful analysis led me to believe that he'd referred to the city and that I'd considered it the worst. A guy can't sit silent in the audience when a public official deals a low blow, knowing that the public has no further chance to speak for two weeks. We live on the shore of Lake Superior. How can anyone think it's the worst? My comments constantly describe local setting as as beautiful, gorgeous, scenic, natural, and... constantly describe local settings as beautiful, gorgeous, scenic, natural, and even the die for. Instead of taking responsibility, Mr. Coyne retaliated in response to my castigation of him for turning his back during citizen comment on July 8th and for his men's room demeanor of last July, December 12th. This is the latest example of an official responding to specific allegations with generality. Our public lake shore is attributable to early commissions, not you seven. Marquette will receive awards no matter what, by virtue of Lake Superior and our rugged topography. We can't help but be nicer than every place else. This is why I devote time to protect the beauty that gives this city its best-rated charm. The best rating may also be our undoing, once throngs of people flock here and urbanize the area. You and the township keep encouraging the influx that many of us moved here to avoid. The increased density is already apparent. Mr. Coyne's treatment of me is getting old. This public official has threatened me in the men's room, and he's turned his back on citizen comment on top of his preposterous July 29th comment. Most bizarre is why he knowingly subjects himself to these comments, which don't make anyone look good, so why do it? He's put so many aces in my pocket that I have to get rid of a few. Later this month, you're holding an ethics workshop. You need more than one work session to cover the grievances against Mr. Coyne alone, much less the comment time reduction, interruption of due public process, disregard of citizen comment, violations of procedure as reported by Mr. Gallant and myself, these being alleged breaches of the oaths you swore to uphold. 16 years of it, and the way we're headed, you're in for 16 more.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address the city commission at this time? Anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time? Seeing none, I'll close this portion of public comment. Turn the comments over to my city commissioners, and Commissioner Kambenzi.
Thank you. I guess, I did sit in on the agenda setting meeting, and I believe the, the reasoning, because we, we did actually ask why L was on the consent agenda, and I believe it was number seven under new business was there, was simply because L had one bid, is that correct, and number seven had three bids, so I believe that's why we, one was on the consent agenda and one was on the new business, simply seeing how they are similar in, in price. I would like to thank the BLP for their presentation, hard work. You know, if my calculations are right, I would like to mention that the city of Marquette will most likely need to do a budget amendment with an 8% increase. It's probably upwards of $100,000, maybe more, that we'd be looking at in October, and, you know, the public schools, NMU, some of these other entities, the larger ones, would likely have to do budget amendments too, so, you know, to me, this is a, it's a big topic, it's a big issue, and I would encourage the public to reach out to us, as well as the BLP, and let your thoughts be heard. Third, I'd like to thank all the community members who ran for office. It's a big job, but it is rewarding. And fourth, I would like to say that I, you know, I do support the idea of planting fruit along the bike path. I did see some people eating the choke cherries, I believe they were, and lots of cars braking as they were doing so along the bike path earlier this weekend, so I think there's potential. I don't, I don't know if we should plant 300 of them, but I do, I like the idea of, you know, having some more edible fruit trees along the bike path, so. An interesting topic to discuss more, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Schneider.
Well, just a few comments, and I'll continue with Commissioner Kambenzi's last of, you know, it shouldn't be a surprise that I support the concept of a community orchard, and I would definitely encourage management to sit down with, with Mr. Feather and the organizations that he's worked with, and come back to us with, with a proposal of how we can do that by spring. I think the grant that's come in, or not the grant, but the gift that we, we received for the, for the challenge, would be a great funding source, but I also know that, that could go to other uses, provided the city has a way of working towards something like this. So, yeah, I look forward to seeing what can be collaborated upon and come up with. Hopefully, it can come up before the first meeting in November. I would love to be able to vote on that, but I think staff has a very full plate, and I will appreciate seeing that as, as a normal resident and non-commissioner as well. Something else that came up this evening, very small thing, but with the BLP's presentation, there was a lot of data up, and it was extremely hard for public to be able to see it on the projectors. I know it's something we're aware of, but it just really became apparent this evening with the amount of, of data that was up there. And lastly, something light, is you've all heard me talk about Dead River Derby, but our city's team will be having the final bout this Saturday evening at the Lakeview Arena, 7:00 PM, and it's a benefit for Seeds and Spores Farm, which had lost their barn a few weeks ago. So I hope to see all city residents, or as many as possible, out, and at least the commission and city staff out there. Thank you guys for a good meeting this evening.
Thank you. Commissioner, Commissioner Ryan?
I just, does, does Roller Derby have a season? When you say our last event, is this the end of the season? I'm just not, if I could ask that, Your Honor.
You can go ahead. You got the floor.
Um, we're, we're subject to a season because Lakeview Arena is the only place large enough to hold an event like this with, with dry floors, and so when the ice comes on, we lose the venue.
It might be even more fun, have you thought about that?
Until the fingers get rolled over.
I'd like to add my support to the fruit trees idea. I'm not sure the exact idea that was presented is, is the direction to go, but I think, I think the concept is certainly something that's worth looking at. We're a pretty unique community, and hopefully we get the city staff involved and our arborist, and, you know, maybe get some conversation going on this, that, I don't think this, I don't think it's something we can hash out sitting at this table, but, and I also, hopefully we can respond and at least see if there are any options for the plexiglass at Lakeview Arena. I think, you know, anytime citizens come and ask these kinds of questions, if we can, if we can find some answers for them, I think, I think it's very good. And I, I meant to mention this last time, but I, I certainly want to thank AT&amp;T for removing the structures off their roof in downtown Marquette. They were, there may have been some practical reasons for doing it as well, I'm not sure, but, but they certainly improved the look of the city by, by taking those down, and especially if they weren't serving a purpose, so my thanks go out to AT&amp;T for making that decision. And I would also encourage people, if they have a concern, to come out to the next meeting, or when we schedule the hearing on the board of light and power increase. I'm a strong supporter of, of that facility. I believe it's a real asset to our community, and I think they've done an excellent job. The size increase they're proposing sounds like a lot, but as they point out, when it, when you make that kind of increase on a smaller amount to start with, it's not quite as much, so there's, there's some things to be looked at, but certainly it's important to hear what, what people are thinking about it, so I, I, I hope people will let us know what they think. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Now, Commissioner Coyne?
Um, I have a couple of things. Uh, Mr. John Ashby called me this afternoon. He walks on Tuesdays and Thursdays on the Presque Isle Park, you know, when there's no vehicles, and on two occasions, back to back, a car drove up the wrong way, the do not enterway, up to the point, and, you know, ran into a whole bunch of people and bicycles, and that, there's a sign that says, "Do not enter," but in the past, that has been chained off when they chain the initials from, from the gazebo, and now it's not. I wonder if the manager could look into that as a reasonable solution, just to put the chain back up and so cars aren't driving the wrong way up that road, when there's nobody supposed to be walking. I also am very supportive of the public orchard fruit forest. I think, just for some thoughts, we do have an arborist, and when people in the community want to come and do something like that, we really have to manage that, just as we can't just turn over a park to somebody and say, "Okay, make a park." I think that's a reasonable kind of thought to involve as a partnership, rather than just a community effort. And I like, I personally like, that's a $9,000 investment, and I think that the community probably would, there'd be a good opportunity for people to donate to it, if it's either through the city, and my, my hometown, Washington DC, is a beautiful city in March because of all the cherry trees, which the Japanese people gave the United States, and it is a tourist attraction and is also profoundly beautiful, and it's spilled over into the suburbs, which is very, very pretty. So, you know, that concept would be a real debt, a real improvement for Marquette, too, if we had all those flowering fruit trees and, in the spring. So I really hope we could pursue that, and I appreciate your coming today. About the vote, thanks to the people who were willing to volunteer and, and put themselves forward. It's disappointing to me that only 14% of the people voted who were eligible, which is discouraging, and I would hope in November, more people would come out and vote, because we have good candidates. And similarly, I, you know, the plexiglass issue, it's really a misnomer. It's no longer plexiglass, because it's plex something, because you can't see through it, and I think the reasonable thing would be to look at that in the next year's budget, as it's going to be coming up in August, you know, whenever that comes up, to try to get that in the budget, to improve that, so. It is a real problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Coyne. Commissioner Neamy?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would also lend my support to a community garden. I would, I kind of like the idea of limiting it to the, the bike path downtown from McCollin to, to the Commons, and I, I think it would be a good use of the Blue Cross School sheet of money, but I think we also need a, an active volunteer group that would, would, would maintain it, and, and the fall, when, when people haven't eaten all the fruit and it ends up on the ground, we need groups to go along and, and pick that up also, I think. But I think that would be a good thing. And honestly, I think, I don't mean to put staff on the spot, but I, could we address Mr. Gunther's, there seems to be a, a natural dilemma where the roof is costing less than the railing, even though the railings are copper clad. I'm not sure if we can, we can do that at this point, or if we, if you want to get back to us on that.
Yeah, I think we'll try not to solve the problem at the table and get back.
Okay.
Anything further, commissioner?
No, that's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I'd like to announce some anniversaries from our city employees, and Deputy Clerk Chris Hazers will have 20 years on August 23rd. August 30th, Water Supervisor Mark Trembath will have 20 years, and August 31st, Staff Surveyor Seven Holmquist will have one year. And on August 16th, after 31 years, the Service Wastewater Treatment Plant Operator Charles Paul is retiring. Chuck was hired July 6, 1982, promoted to Water Treatment Plant Operator in '83, and then '84 posted to the position of Wastewater Treatment Plant Operator. We'd like to congratulate Chuck Paul on his 31 years of dedicated public service, and wish Chuck a happy retirement, and all the employees on their anniversary. And August 3rd and 4th, the 35th National Guts Frisbee Tournament was held at Hurley Field with over 16 teams from all over the United States, and, and it was just a banner year with frisbees being thrown at, clocked up to 90 miles an hour, but special thanks to organizers Kurt Leighton and Buck Buchanan, Liz Beckman, their committee, sponsors, volunteers and fans. Thank everyone. And this past week, with, with over 2,500 cyclists racing in the 14th Annual Order Shore Fun was had by all the racers and fans, cheering on their favorite racers. We would like to congratulate everyone who helped organize this great community event, the sponsors, volunteers, and everyone who helped to make this a safe and fun event, especially for the racers, and thanking the motorists as racers travel across the roads to get to their end of the racetrack. And thank you to Commissioner Stonehouse for getting the Great Lakes Cruise Ship York Town to stop over this past Tuesday at Matson Park, Lower Harbor in Marquette, and with over 138 passengers. Most of the passengers walked in the downtown area to do some shopping, then they left port, came back on Saturday. York Town made a trip back to the Matson Lower Harbor for the passengers to once again enjoy our downtown area. And I would like to also thank the organizers, sponsors, volunteers, vendors and the public who had a chance to enjoy a great sunny Saturday at Matson Park and enjoy their first ever U-per-day celebration, with plenty of food, music and vendors. Fun was had by all in attendance, and also I'd like to echo about the fruit trees, and I'm sure there's a place somewhere for it in city Marquette. And also, last year even, at the Lakeview Arena, where the, just towards the ends, where the goalies are, is where it's marked up. They aren't looking at replacing all of the glass all the way around. It was just like, I think it was like four sheets at one end and four at the other, so I don't really believe that, that can be scrubbed off, because those rubber pucks, once they're marked on there, I'd never seen them removed, and even at the Pig and Heat game, you could hardly see the players, because it was very bad, but we'll, we'll check into that, me and the city manager, and see what we can do with finding a solution to cleaning that up. And with that, City Manager Bill Fida, will you give your next community office hours, date and locations, please?
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, we have community office hours coming up again this Wednesday, August 14th. It's going to be from 10 to 12 at the Peter White Public Library Community Conference Room, just inside the west entrance, and so please come on down. We'll have the coffee ready, and we'll be looking to hear everybody's great ideas on how to make Marquette even better. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, and with that, we are adjourned.